Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Douglas Planning Board Meeting for December 11th, 2018. The meeting is being recorded and is available for viewing on the Douglas Public Access Channel and on the Douglas website. We'll come to order at 7:00. First item on the agenda, public hearing continued, ASD Wollom Lake, Mass Solar LLC, application for site plan review. Give your name and...
Yes, sir.
Jeff Perch.
So, everyone, I'm Evan Turner. I'm with ASD Wollom Lake MA Solar LLC, which is just the project company for the site here on Wollom Lake Road. We have since our last meeting been to the Conservation Commission, completed the Anrat process to confirm and agree to the wetland lines, some of which are a little different than our last. So, the first thing I'll do is go over the site here, noting some changes, and then I'll walk through our responses to the questions that you provided. It would give us a pretty good structure to address what we left out from last meeting. So, the changes to the plan set here, same access drive on the way in, still about 280, 300 feet long from this northeast corner. The main new feature is an intermittent stream that was picked up by Mr. Allen, the wetlands consultant that we worked with the Conservation Commission with, that effectively just shrank the project down a little bit from the top, since we will stay 100 feet away from it and out of the Conservation Commission's jurisdiction. The whole project just slid down, and this will remain forested. So, to the neighbors to the north, a little more buffer, you know, always nice to be able to get some of that back. Very minor changes over here, we had a little bit of wetland removal here that Mr. Allen thought wasn't there, but effectively between this going away, we lost our top retaining pond, because it's still forested. So, you know, it was right here, and now, since this is still tree, there's no more retaining ponds. Little bit of modules here on the outside of the road, the original south retaining pond, and then the bottom of the site is more or less as before. Still contours outside the wetlands, those did not change on Conservation Commission review. So, things you won't see here, but we did include in the plan set and they'd be in the big formal package we provided you. There is a landscape strip in gray here, that's what the gray is. So, that's generally like a 20-foot-wide landscape buffer with a variety of evergreen-type items, some trees, some shrubs, a little bit of, not just, you know, every five feet, you know, Douglas fir kind of item. Otherwise, plan set is pretty straightforward. Instead of, we did put the utility pad right, or the inverter pad right here at the north, because the site was no longer big enough to really warrant putting it all the way in the middle, as we lost the size, so. Otherwise, exactly as before. And I guess I'll go through the items here that are designed on the responses to Douglas Planning Meeting comments here. So, owner's signatures, we got done, signage on the fence.
So, I'm sorry.
Yes, sir.
In your packet is this list, and this is basically a summary of the list of things that the board raised at the last meeting. So, it's just a quick laundry list, bulleted numbered, not fancy at all.
But it gives us a nice agenda to knock out here to then get us cleaned up. So, the signage on the fence, we confirmed, you know, there'll be signs around the perimeter that say, you know, "Do not enter" because of the, you know, the electrical nature of the site. There's also signage on the gate right up front that says, you know, contact information for, you know, operator of the array as well as the O&amp;M folks, so you know who to call in any circumstance. That's, and that's number three as well for emergency contact numbers.
Those are spelled out on the plans.
They're on the last page set of the plans. Special training for the fire department, I did give them another call to ask, they had nothing that they wanted specifically for the site, so, but if they were to come up with something, we're happy to, you know, we're happy to make that a condition of a special...
That was more of a question, I think.
Yeah.
If, you know, you've done a number of these, I'm sure, and have, have there been any arrays that you've installed that have warranted or required any special training for the fire department?
No, I mean, it's, they all shut down. There's not a lot to go wrong, so, no. I mean, the fire departments are pretty benign. There's, you know, there's an inverter box, as long as you have adequate access to the site itself, we're more concerned about something like a brush fire than any of the electrical equipment.
Yeah. Because frankly, you know, we have two arrays, but they weren't done as large or as isolated as this one. And so, therefore, I think we're getting to a point where I think, you know, and the chief, with all deference, isn't as familiar with some of the issues that might arise with a solar array as perhaps your experiences.
And...
Which is why the question came about.
Yes, sir. And the answer is, they didn't ask for anything. We're happy to provide such. You know, all the extinguishing on the equipment is all CO2-based, so it's not like a foam or any of that stuff, it's a standard fire extinguisher, more or less. Take away the oxygen, lower the temperature, fire goes out as everything shuts down. And it's all automated as well. So, I would expect if, you know, they, they don't have any special training, it's just electrical fire material if that were to happen. And of course, I mean, it's really straightforward into the site to get to. That's part of the simplicity as well of bringing that to the top.
Okay.
There's not a lot of ways to...
I think we're leading into the next comment.
Yes, sir. Emergency equipment on site, all again, happy to provide, and we'll get there for...
I think you skipped the emergency, emergency response plan.
Yes, sir. Submitted to the town fire department. So, we'd like to do that before the building permit, because we want to get 100% drawings for the site. We don't know, of course, before we get a site plan review, that this site will be as-is. You had mentioned, of course, as well, you have multiple entrances or et cetera, that, you know, once we have a fully confirmed plan, we can develop that, and to your satisfaction. We can, I'm happy to come back to the board as a condition of a site plan review and present that plan to you guys if required. Similar, that's kind of like the same thing as a decon bond, you want to be able to use the exact 100% drawings to reference the bond rather than the 30% we have here. So, number eight, I believe we're down, if I lump five, six, seven together, the emergency on, equipment on site.
Seven?
Oh, yes, sir. And then fire suppression, all electrical equipment.
Question for you.
Yes, sir.
Is there any oil in the inverters? Like, with a transformer, there's oil in there?
So, not in the inverters, the transformers, yes, some are air-cooled, some are oil-cooled, but the inverters, not to my knowledge, no. They're all fan-cooled.
What happened to the old road? Is that...
The one that's, it's just not shown, but, you know, the cart path, I guess, is more semi-accurate, it's a little more than that, but it's just not shown.
Is it on some of the other plans?
Uh, it's on the other plans, it's just we didn't include it here.
It's on the existing conditions plan.
And what, there was something that was located right in the middle to minimize noise? Is that the thing?
Yeah, that's what we moved up, and then we did the noise study based off the location here, which we'll get to. I guess we can do it right now.
Well, I'm sorry, I didn't...
Yes, sir. So, just one of the things on our list, so TRC did a noise study, and we've done this on some other sites. Our rule of thumb on that is we take the inverters, and then we double them in quantity, and then we assume no trees, because we're trying to take the worst-case scenario here, and then we see what the increase would be at the nearest property line in noise when the fans and the inverters are running. And that came out to, I think, just over three?
Just over three, and at the nearest house, it was under three, which is not audible. So, it's very low. There, it's a good buffer here because of the wetlands that we were forced to move away from, and that helps dissipate the noise.
Relatively speaking, I think we're only about 200-ish, 250 feet north of where they were originally. It's a relatively minor move, it just made more sense to tuck them up next to the road instead of driving all the way into the site. Now, you've got turnarounds and fire trucks, and, you know, it's easier to put it on the loop now.
How close is the nearest house?
Yeah, from your inverter pad.
Can I get a ruler, please, Jeff, and we'll take a look at it there?
It's dimensioned on one of the drawings, but can we get a name?
Yeah.
Chuck Roslin Road.
Okay. Go ahead and ask your question, but we're gonna do the meeting, and then I'll take questions from the audience, no problem, at the end of our discussion, okay?
Okay.
So, what was your question, sir?
The question was, how close to the nearest house is it?
My spitball right now will be, let's see, two fingers, 100, more than 300 feet. I'd probably go to 350 to 375 and just eyeball it. So, noise in that regard, we have zero concern about, it's just not a loud kind of operation. Of course, we have, this is all fully treated, and has to stay that way. Wetlands are about the most protective thing you can get a hold of.
Right.
That, you know, we're kind of, it will dance to...
Okay, can we?
Yes, sir.
With regard to the noise, is it a consistent noise that's nonstop, or is it intermittent? Or what's the type of noise?
Closer to the second. What you're hearing are cooling fans.
Okay.
That's the louder noise. There is a smaller, lower-pitched hum that is part of the internal workings of the inverter. That's the higher, I'm sorry, the higher-pitched, you know, continuous item, but these are more or less an audible of 50 feet, is a fair rule of thumb. We double the numbers and, you know, take all the trees, because things don't always work perfectly as they get older. All electronics ever get a little louder as they get older.
And at nighttime, one, noise counts the most, because it's the quietest. I think, so the inverters don't run?
Yeah, and it's night, so the batteries will run a little bit with the inverters.
So, the noise is way down from what we modeled, through modeling, worst case.
That's, that's how we like to look at it, so.
Filtering? Anything more? Filter along the...
Well, I don't know. Good. Yeah, it's just for information, so people understand.
Thank you, Bill.
Yes, sir. So, we, let's go to emergency equipment on site and fire suppression and all electrical equipment, those are kind of together. Every box on site is, has a fire suppression system to it, the inverters do, the battery boxes do, and that's, you know, a CO2, nitrogen kind of item like a normal fire extinguisher. So, if the electrical inspector required it, we'd be happy to put more bottles, I guess, on site if the fire department wanted that, but the boxes don't require them, just like all the other inverters and all the other arrays. I mean, if anything's wrong, it just shuts down. And to be an area for somehow something caught on fire, I doubt the fire department's gonna show up and spray it with a bunch of water, based on all my conversations with other fire chiefs, they'll let it smolder itself out, and they'll call us right away, and we'll come swap it out with a new one. It's not something you want to go spraying down. So, that brings us to eight, specified plantings for screening, so part of what we submitted in the interim was a landscape plan.
You have a different list than us?
That's seven hours.
Oh, all right.
Um, yeah, might be a different version.
Sneaky, sneaky Jeff. So, we're on specified plantings.
We have been dumping around...
In fact, I'm just gonna, I'm just gonna hang over your shoulder here.
Clear.
Good to go, so.
The one right below that one.
Jeff's trying to make this hard for me. All right, so, plantings for screening, so in the plan sets we provided, we have landscape screening plans. It's the mix of evergreen items, kind of a belt-and-suspenders approach, where we're a little closer. So, remember, the array goes just downhill this way, so all the gray is landscape buffer, of course, and here we also put in wooden fence, so that's alternating picket that you don't see through, eight feet tall, and since we're at the top of the site right here and it's all downhill, we have zero expectation of visibility by the neighbors.
Excuse me, what'd you say, picket? What do you mean?
So, alternating wooden picket, thing like a four-by-four post?
Are you talking pressure-treated?
Yeah, pressure-treated this...
But a wood product?
Yes, sir. The same thing, you can get from Home Depot forever, that it can't really...
I just want to make sure you're not saying chain link with the little straps through it.
Oh, those are awful. No, sir. There'll be a chain link fence around the whole array, because we have to for electrical code, but when we're talking screening, we put in something that's of a residential nature, so. And that goes, that's here for these two neighbors, although there's no house shown, there is one now, and then up here as well for these guys before the trees start. All right, let's go to identify names and owners on the plans, that has been done.
We have a new separate sheet, I think it's sheet two or three, that has all the property owners and houses and...
They're just listed in a clockwise fashion, I think, starting from the bottom left.
A miniature of it, but it has all the lots and the property names and addresses, just so everyone knows where everybody is.
Awesome. So, we're on number nine, grass dieback. The short version here is reseated until it's done. I mean, that's the, there's not a lot else you can do.
Okay, is it addressed on the drawing set?
I believe, it should be in a note somewhere, but let me, let me see which. ASD, we receive, details are provided on page C401.
Yeah.
So, I think there's a couple procedural things we can do there. The building permits will always, will require you inspections after rainstorms, inspections after, you know, say, every month on a schedule, and what we...
That's in there, too.
Super. And what we tend to do, like, we can come back and give the board a presentation, say, at mechanical completion, at a year-end, whatever the board wants to add as the condition to, you know, give you a status of it. But effectively, you know, when you're talking about brass dieback, it's, doesn't die back, but it's, it's the reseating, that you want to make sure you don't get any spots that don't take, because you have a large site, if relatively flat, about a 3% downhill, but just about turned into a field, and once you get it there, it's pretty comfortable.
So, there's no material getting home off-site, right?
We're not even, the program doesn't allow us to do that at all, much less your preferences.
So, we talked about the loom before, and what was happening, and you were respreading it, so did you give me an answer on, after you put the posts in, then you said you were gonna respread it?
So, I think we turned some things around. Posts will be installed, for instance, on part of the property, as, you know, it doesn't happen all in the same day, so they'll, when, as they, they'll clear the site, they will grind the stumps, and that natural soil that builds up will be spread back around the site, you know, ahead of them doing the pile.
Okay.
Yeah, so...
I was just confused how they were gonna do that.
The confusion there is, like, for instance, they might be working up here, finishing up the clearing work and smoothing while they're installing piles, you know, over in the site.
Yeah, I was just figuring like huge piles of loom and...
No, man. So, yeah, they'll, they'll spread it right back around.
They're gonna dump it on top of these posts, and then like try to rake it or something. Yeah. That's what you told me.
Yes, that was, that was me being a little inaccurate.
Okay.
All right, so magnetic field EMF, we provided you a report through TRC's Electrical Group, no different than other electrical stuff, no concern from the array. Obviously, the array is even further away than when we talked last time.
The electric and magnetic fields were both lower than ambient levels at the property line, so they're very low. And much lower than you would ever have in your house.
All right, so...
Now, where, where exactly was that magnetic information in your transmittal?
It's a separate report. It's called, screening level EMF evaluation. I have an extra one if you want.
Yeah, thank you, great. Thank you.
And that's, you know, that's a good, that kind of report will apply to any project, just good to have on hand. We haven't actually had to do one of those before, but, I mean, at this point, solar array is solar array, is solar array, you know, it's the same stuff, so for future projects, for other considerations, it's, it's handy to have on board.
The general consultant that did it was the person that did it for the state of Massachusetts when they did the whole cleanup and program, so.
You asked about reflection, sir, I believe, like, due to the west. The way the site is set up, remember, it's about five stories high, but the trees are certainly well taller than that even on the west side, so even the easiest angle from the top over here to the west, and these trees are taller, you know, at level, much less at the road or ground height, and of course, over here, you'll have the same height trees, because we're leaving some buffer, as well as to the south and the north, so we don't, we don't have a way that glare is gonna leave the site. That's the, the convenience of not working in fields, is that there's no real great sightline to the array from any, you know, even just public way, much less house or such. Construction process and duration, and I'm gonna go to the page here just to make sure I get the numbers right. So, we worked with our construction manager just to get a ballpark for this item, and we have since our last meeting gotten more of the information on the interconnection process. I can tell you it will take about 18 months to two years to get the interconnection side built. We only need about six to eight months to build this, so you can expect a delay in between, you know, an award here and us getting started by the majority of a year, just because we don't want to finish the thing and have it sit for a year, not doing anything, because we can't plug it in. With that said, so, site clearing, several weeks, those guys work pretty quick. After that, you're talking about nine weeks of heavier stuff, and you're building up, you know, with the manpower in the middle, then kind of down on the tail end. The maximum manpower will be when you have, you know, one group right here, if we work downhill to uphill, for instance, you know, there's a group here finishing up, putting modules on, you know, the group here is building the racking, these guys are driving piles, and then these guys are smoothing and clearing the rest of the site, and that's kind of the max manpower you'll see on site. You asked about trucks, based on the megawatts, you're talking about, let's see, 47 for modules, 10 for racking, a truck or two for weekly consumables and that kind of stuff, as well as two to three concrete trucks, you know, for the pad here. So, you can expect, you know, the same, you know, a couple dozen cars at the top end of the construction, and since we have a large site, obviously all this road to work on, everyone parks well inside, because they have all this space, everyone queues inside, it's about deliveries, as well as, there's no queuing on the street, everyone just pulls in and gets in line around the edge, if they need to stop, in a sense of like deliveries and drop-offs and such things. Alternate egress, we don't see a unsafe situation with a single-access road. I know you, I believe your email said the fire chief, you know, thought it'd be more safe with two. I don't disagree, more egress is always better, but I'd be interested to hear what the board has, thinks about, I guess, the sufficiency of a single-access on most all, every array that I know of. I mean, it's certainly nice to have two, but we like the cost and, you know, how well we can do one, and we think it's plenty sufficient and safe.
So, I raised this question with the fire chief, and he did think that it was an important feature to have an alternate access egress, since we do have an opportunity on this site.
Did it do something right, remember?
I had, I, I put our conversation in an email, and I copied Kent on the email, it's in your packet. So, and the scenario isn't necessarily a fire scenario, could be an access cutoff situation, and they need to get in to, you know, attend to somebody who may be got hurt or something along those lines, so having the, and again, we're not looking at a full access egress on the secondary road strictly for emergency purposes. I think it's a prudent feature, and I certainly would recommend that it be included at least as a condition of approval.
So, I guess I'd like, because that's a, you know, it's a decent dollars and process, you know, change, I guess I'd like to know if the board concurs with that, and if we need to move forward considering a second access. You know, it's, I guess our opinion is kind of split, I'm not fundamentally against it, but it is a dollars and cents decision, and it isn't, I guess, required for any other equivalent use in town or other solar arrays.
Does Bosma have a dual access?
No.
Bosma has practical access from other areas, from abutting properties.
But, I mean, it's the fence line that I'm thinking of, a single-access to the site starts at a gate and/or a road, you know, in.
They do, they do, from the abutting property, which is a gravel pit.
What about the other one there on 16?
They do, too. Percy Drive also has two.
Yeah.
So, everyone in Douglas does have two.
Yeah.
So...
I think we like it.
I mean, I think about fire chief.
Yeah, I mean, he's not saying a full road, just that, look at it.
Just a second, just a second access, in case that one gets blocked and they have to get into there.
Okay.
I, I think if the fire chief thinks it's prudent that, that be super done, we could do it.
Because the gate will still be towards the edge, so what are you saying about a gate? It starts with a gate.
Well, that's, when I think of access to a site, and this is not a big concern, it's just getting into it, it's, you know, you could have 12 roads up to a single gate, and you still have a single, I guess, I think of it as a point of failure, right? Something gets blocked, and you can't get in.
Right.
So, when I think second access, that's what I think of, the two relatively independent, pretty much impossible to block them both with one event kind of items.
Right.
That's what I think you guys have in mind, and it makes you more comfortable.
Yeah.
I think we just...
Follow-up discussion.
So, with that in mind, we got ahead of that, and this is what we'll do. So, we've got plan sets over there, with this, this change, we just put in two driveways right here at the top. So, what we've not been able to do here, we took out the landscaping, we left the trees in the middle, and now we just have two 24-foot-wide driveways here off of Wollom. You know, I'm sure we'll consider one to be a little more permanent than the others and will maintain. We've still got wooden fence here, right along the tree line, for the same visual blocking, still comes down just like it did before, still come off the street, the same utility pole, same everything, just comes right in, and otherwise, it's just two accesses into the site.
That's effectively one access from my perspective.
I agree.
Do you have a turn, turning radius?
So, could we talk about the other access point? Unless you want to ask Les, answer Les's question first?
Turning radius? I'd have to go to Jeff for the, this is all lay-down area, so this is a little easier to turn around in.
So, so you've got two 24-foot openings?
Mm-hmm.
And the separation between the two is?
About 100 feet.
100 feet?
I mean, the goal, if the goal is to ensure that you can get to the site, we couldn't come up with a single thing that would happen 100 feet apart that would block both roads.
Yeah.
What we're not willing to do as an applicant is to go back to the Conservation Commission and ask them for what is effectively a nonessential access road, because you, I mean, you have to consider that, as I say you as the con con, but I'm sorry to lay that all on you.
No, that's fine.
It is a challenge to ask a Conservation Commission for something that isn't required. Their bylaws require them to consider alternate accesses and have we, do we have what we need otherwise? And I would say the answer is yes, we have what we need. Something we want, agree, to access better than one, but need, that's a much harder argument.
So, you don't think the chief is, in the best interest of the public, safety by requiring an alternate access?
I do not agree with that statement.
Okay.
I think that it is sufficient and safe, based on all the other arrays I've ever seen designed, used.
Except in Douglas.
Fair. I mean, but getting to the property may be a little different than getting inside the array and moving around. We have vastly superior internal roads than other arrays have in town, and there's nothing, I mean, it's the difference between being completely normal and safe and building the code.
Isn't there a road already there?
Kind of, one moment. It's the difference between building the code and going above and beyond, both are perfectly adequate. What I'm not looking to do is get into a second architecture kind of process here, where we negotiate the design, this is what we will be submitting. I'm not willing to go back to the Conservation Commission with the cost of going through this and/or replicating it and/or weeks and months of design, just for a maybe, that I may not get. In this case, you know, we can put in two accesses, that'll, I mean, it's kind of one, but they're not both gonna get blocked.
I think my only concern with the, the two accesses is just if, if the fire chief came in with one of his engines, that it can go up the other path.
Yes, sir. So, this is a 38-foot, looks like a radius here.
Yep. If he's got room to go up and down.
50, that's all. And of course, it loops all the way around.
Yeah.
And this area is all open as well.
Yeah, exactly. The area west, you could drive into.
So, he'd have a turning radius.
Yeah, so there'd be, there's 200 feet at least in there to, to turn himself around.
That's fair. I mean, you've got 100-foot separation between both entrances there, so.
Yeah, I mean, if you have a truck broken down in one of them, maybe you have a second access.
Certainly for, if, if only for construction, though, that makes an easy in-and-out, a little easier on the traffic flow, and certainly if we had a traffic person there managing it, one person here is a little easier than two people.
That's fair. Phil?
Again, I view that as a singular access egress, and I would recommend that when we look at the southerly access egress location.
at the southerly access egress location. I understand the applicants opposed to it. I do want to point out that it's just buffer zone work, it's not filling of wetlands, based on the plan that's been provided. And, again, I want to reiterate, we're not looking for a paved, you know, 24-foot wide road, we're looking for an emergency access egress, which, you know, gravel would suffice.
I can tell you that, as the applicant, we will not be offering a road through there. Like, that's not, we don't want to engage the Conservation Commission, just because it's not in a wetland doesn't mean it doesn't have a very similar impact when we go through and work right next to it, or the grading that ends up impacting the wetland.
Fair enough.
And I'm going to say on this here, this is more than what we have in most cul-de-sacs. Most cul-de-sacs have one road going in to a bunch of houses that people actually live in, with a single road, and here we are with just a solar farm on the middle of the woods, and we're given two roads side by side, 100 feet apart. I think it's more than enough than.
I'll, I'll take a straw vote from, a yes or no, if you're okay with this, or if you want to sue another access.
I don't think that that's really, I would rather just see one driveway then. Instead of, I mean, spending, it doesn't even matter.
I would rather have a wider driveway going in.
Yeah, one wider driveway.
Than having two. You're disturbing more by doing two than having one wider.
I would say that would be.
Say, much wider than your standard.
Because I'd like to.
What was the width on the other side?
Uh, these are 24, so I think this one is, Jeff, I'd have to confirm with you here.
But it's pulling it away from that corner.
It's a different scale, like I can't quite.
Disturbance.
Yeah, and that's the trick. So if I, if we're talking about, again, that's the other part of it, is the abutter concerns, you would not believe there's an access here between the houses that are right here if you drive by. You'd be kind of surprised. So, but if I put a road in there, that'll be a little more work for the abutters.
But I want to know how wide that driveway is above.
I will have to pull it off a plan set, that's a much higher resolution than this one. I believe, these are, the others are 24, I think these are probably 20 or 22, but we can make it as wide as you want.
I want it wider, it's going to be wider than that, much wider. You need to say, let's say your general apparatus is eight-six wide, plus some areas or whatever, you've got to figure a minimum of 10, 10 feet wide. Then if you plow with snow, you're going to lose a couple of feet. And if one broke down on one side, you want to have plenty of room for another to pass by it.
And certainly, from like a single design.
Where's the snow going?
I mean, we can make that 30 feet wide, and there's no trouble with that, because at the end of construction, we will come and plant over the edges, and that will be.
25 foot, thank you.
25? Well, you need, you need more than that.
So we can, whatever the board's comfortable with for a single, we'll make it that width.
What about some snow plowing of the roads in the wintertime? Do you have designated slow, snow areas, away from the 100?
Yeah, but graphically it doesn't, does it?
Away from the 100, where around the edges.
Yeah.
So at this time, no. I guess there isn't like a buffer built in for plowing, pileup.
Do you not plow during the winter time?
Oh, we do, but I guess we just push it to the inside, there'll be room around the inside for that.
We can make it wider, I mean, I think it's 25 feet.
You could for full, two ways.
Yeah, you need, you make it 30 feet, I'd be happy with.
I'll make whatever you guys need there.
I'd have one and two.
It creates more buffer on either side of residential.
Right. You have the one that's wide enough, plenty of room there, you're not disturbing as much, you keep it further away from the neighbors' houses, to keep the one.
Is there an existing cart path that is through there?
Through here?
The other side?
Through this side?
The other access.
There is one shown in the existing conditions plan, I wouldn't call it a.
Yeah, it's not much of a path.
Have you walked it?
I have, what, eight or nine months ago in the spring. I wouldn't consider it something that would be, if you're asking for like, does it exist so much that the Conservation Commission could consider it existing?
No, no, that if you put a gate, could people get out, if you were to put a gate on that side?
So we need a gate right here, could people get in and out of the site?
That's a, that's a two-way.
You give me a real good truck, that doesn't have to care about paint, or its conditions, then yes, I could probably get you back.
Well, in an emergency.
If you're talking like a fire truck, you know, or a large brush truck, I wouldn't trust it, especially if it got wet. Like, if it's anything but perfect, I wouldn't.
And that's also not a question.
Having, you just.
If it's a real emergency, and there's no way out. I don't know.
Yeah, it's, I mean, thinking construction, right?
You don't hear many solar emergencies, solar farm emergencies.
Well, it's about access, I think.
There's one, there's one access road to all.
Frankly, you know, I leave that call to the fire chief, but.
I don't see a correspondence with him, for him.
You see my correspondence?
I only see this, "Hi Chief, please review below, also if you could submit your thoughts."
No, that.
I don't have anything else from him.
That's the other solar problem. They're all mixed, the Shields, and the Chesbrough one, it's all mixed. There's an email from me in the packet.
No, this is Evan, yeah, I know.
This is Evan, this one, yeah, you're right.
This is another Evan page.
Okay, so, yes, there's multiple Evans, they all do solar. I don't have the response from the chief.
Yeah, well, we will, we'll get to, I mean.
Let's come back, let's move on.
Doubling the, what do you want, you said you could make it as wide as one?
Thirty-two, I'd say 30 feet.
Thirty-eight, 30 feet is good.
Yeah.
Thirty-three.
So one egress, but just widen it, so that if one vehicle is broke down, there is another access to get by.
That's correct, right.
I'm not really crazy about putting it between pieces of property of residents, I'm not crazy about them having to go back to wetlands and getting wetlands involved, and we're going to see access.
Right, right.
I think we.
Do you have the chief's response for this project?
I don't. I did send him a request to put it in writing, I have not received it back. I can relay, I had a conversation with him, and he was pretty adamant he would like an alternate access egress.
Did we get a project review the first time, from him, from the chief?
I'm not sure.
It would have been, it would have been in your packet if it, if it was.
There was a response, like he went through like.
Should be at the back of my letter, maybe?
Health and safety, water, like, and they all had a checklist, and he had an email that said what he wanted. It wasn't the same form.
Right.
Well, you, you heard my opinion. That's what I, that's what I want to see done.
I agree with that, too.
And I think it's the safest, the best, the simplest, and it works both ways.
Stripe a line down the middle, keep the traffic on one side, if somebody gets blocked.
Less destruction on opening up a whole other road between houses, making a whole other road with 100 feet apart, just keep the one.
And widen it.
And widen it.
That's a condition, 30 feet.
Yep.
Les is okay, Aaron?
Up to three.
We hope the 30-foot thing. Make the, make the entrance wider so that two vehicles can't pass, an emergency, they can get in.
Yeah, I was trying to find something, but, from the chief, but.
It was the last page of that group of stuff, it was just there, that's the email. You're right.
Oh, place of that, okay.
Run that by the chief, and let him know this.
You read what it says.
We'd like to solve that by widening it so that two vehicles can't pass, so they can't get in and out of the area.
Show him the turnaround, we want to see.
Yeah, we'll get a giant, this intersection will be, we'll increase it, we'll make it perfect for every.
Yep.
Absolutely.
Super.
All right.
We'll do, we'll do something similar, like, you know, in the other one, we cut this corner off a little bit, and kind of made it a big triangle, give you some more space.
Get something on the plan, and.
Yes, sir.
Go from there.
All right. So, next one I've got is temporary parkers for workers, shown on page two and 200. Signage for construction, so that'll, I mean, there's no special signage. We don't, you know, advertise the other site, it's just, you know, if there's, I think the most you'd see is a guy directing traffic on delivery desk, there at the property. Surety Interston Road, happy to make a condition of the site plan review, that we have a bond for the road condition. So we get out there with a town engineer or building inspector or whoever, take a look at, you know, Wallam Lake Road, take a look when we're done, and we'll figure out the right bond cost. For the tree clearing, forestry information, C401 for that, as well as we'll file a forest cutting claim. So that's how we'll, we'll knock all that down, it'll be right on the front of the project. No chemical applications, we don't ever plan to use any, we're happy to make that a condition of the site plan review. Yes, sir.
For the forestry, you just plan on cutting in the area that, with the, with the arrays going, even though, with a forestry permit, it can go into the wetlands area.
Well, not into, but near. That's, other foresters would tell me that it can be a big deal. We would stick to the limit of cutting, and if we wanted to change that, I'd have to go back to the ConCom, and ask them to work in the buffer for the vast majority of this site. So that is not currently a permission I have.
You're doing a formal forest cutting plan?
I like to submit them, but like, with the building permit, I like to submit a forest cutting plan as well.
Doesn't a forest cutting plan leave some mature trees for saplings?
It usually does, but it doesn't have to.
Okay.
You can, you can do 100% cut.
Okay.
Though it's not ever, it's not ever really done, because, but I just like to be all thirty, then you pull everyone in, you do it right, and you have a discussion on how you should clear it, and everyone's.
Well, you're clear-cutting, so how?
Well, as in how the quality of the land, how you treat the, you know, the buffers, how you flag it off, so you don't go across, all those things. I just, I like to do them both.
And you're not going into the buffer, so that's, so you are leaving trees.
Yeah. So the typical style for that is we'll go in and we'll flag the outer edge of the clearing, with the silt fence and wattle, and that's just color inside the lines. If you screw it up, you are really impressive. All right. Landscape stabilization bond, that's on page 100, 101, and 102, the landscape set that was provided. And it goes with the chemical applications, we don't use chemicals, we're happy to make that a condition of anything, that it's just mowing, and we clean with water, but generally, you don't, you don't have to clean them, it rains often enough, it's not a big enough difference on the modules.
Yeah, this year.
Noise study, we covered, and specific hours, unless the board slash town has anything more restrictive or otherwise, seven to five, Monday to Friday.
Yeah, there's somewhere.
So we, unless for some reason we got some crazy.
Excluding holidays.
Yeah, then all.
Not all, we have extra holidays in town here.
Man, we're working.
Bank holidays. Do the European schedule?
Bank holidays.
Josh Hunning, spell your last name.
Brandt, B-R-A-N-D-T.
That was about three minutes. She got, what you said, it must have been your accent.
Is it Monday through Friday, or Monday through Saturday?
Monday through Friday. We'd only work weekends if we somehow got to a time of right, and that'd be, but with, since we know how long it'll take to build the, the interconnection, we just plan that out.
Many of the dry wells are fresh, don't want to catch the water.
Can we go back to 15, construction signage? What was your comment on that?
We show signage would be provided as necessary, so may include signs or instructions not to park or queue on the road.
Yeah.
But otherwise, it's just, and there's no specific signage we'd have for construction. We don't require signs, like at other intersections, you know, pointing us to the array for deliveries, it's just drivers know where to go.
But they won't be stacked up out in the road or anything, they'll be going, everything will be coming into the site.
Yeah, everything comes into the site.
And going back out after it's empty.
And realistically, during the site, you know, you might have trucks pull in, and it's like upper corner, you know, it becomes just one big turnaround, and then they just queue on out. So, because certainly everything doesn't get taken up at one time.
Now, in the first set of plans, on the first meeting, you had a staging area down on the bottom right here, you're not going to be doing that?
We decided, so it's real close to the buffer, and it was a lot, it was more work closer to these guys. And what our construction guys said, you know, if we phase this smartly, you know, we work uphill, for instance, we'll just work our way out of the site, and we'll stage in the middle.
Okay.
And that'll be, less is more in that sense, so.
That works.
It was a nice to have, when we didn't think there was as much wetland here, but when there was, yeah, just not big enough to worry about.
As, as necessary, you said, sign, I mean, that's a long straightaway, there's a lot of traffic on that road at times, and there are trucks also that use that road, so, I mean, you're going to have like, trucks entering and exiting, is that type of, the type of signage you're going to have?
So, so, no, no, let, let's be clear here, you're not proposing signage, correct?
Not at the moment, we're happy to have it required, if the town wants a notice, you know, exit.
Typically, we would have them show that type of thing on the drawing.
I would like, I would like to see trucks entering and exiting, or something of that nature.
Got you, at each end. Got you, at each end of the property here.
Yeah, enough time, you know, distance, whatever.
Construction work zone type.
Yeah, whatever the work zone requires.
Just to give people a heads up, yes, sir.
And during the construction phase, you're going to have a stone or whatever, prevent dirt, mud, grit, grime, all that.
The entrance will be stabilized, yes.
Okay.
And that's, I believe we showed a, it's a paved apron right off the road.
Yeah.
And then 20 or 30 feet it'll be in, but we'll keep it clean.
Okay.
Yeah.
Bill, questions?
Well, a couple of comments, I'd like to start with comments. I typically get a written response to my comment letter, and I had not received that as part of this application. I did get the plan set on the 5th, along with the stormwater calcs, I have not had a chance to look at the stormwater, and from my perspective, that's probably the biggest issue relative to the site, particularly for the residents on Shore Road. So, I would like an opportunity to take a look at that. The, you know, there's a few things within the plan set that, that does concern me, it still says conceptual on the cover, for example. The plan set that was submitted to the town has draft stamps throughout the set, so there's some things with regard to the plan that I do want to take a look at.
I thought we took the draft stamps off.
Some of the sheets, some of the sheets still say draft.
Permit certainly.
Could be watermarks.
So, so I do, based on those comments, I would like an opportunity to take a closer look through the plan set, and make sure everything's final, and the stormwater's proper.
You did have a construction sequence, like you're phasing the, so that the whole site isn't going to be open at one time, for runoff?
In a simple way, yes, ma'am, that we'll get it, as we clear it, it will be stabilized and seeded.
Okay.
So we don't, it's not a big bare patch of dirt, you know, for an extended period.
That is noted on the plan, so.
It is, that's the whole procedure.
The construction's.
Doing pieces at a time, and me seeming as you go is definitely focused on.
Okay.
Anybody else want to, boy, have a comment or question?
We're going to bring up, well, we're going to talk about some sort of way to capture runoff. I mean, I don't trust the plant, grass plantings, but, and there is a pitch across the whole site towards the lake, so we had spoken last time, and it wasn't addressed here per se, that it'd be some sort of 90 degrees to the pitch. Yep, there's three.
We, I think, we have trouble adding more than the engineers say we need, because I can't reduce the runoff below what's there now.
Correct, but, but you're eliminating whatever, 20,000 trees, a thousand trees, whatever it is, I don't know how you, when you just try to plant grass underneath these things, and you get heavy rains, you know, how do you capture that, so you don't increase it beyond what it is now? I mean, we're not trying to say to be less than what it is now.
Yeah, we are. Equal or less.
Well, equal, well, I mean, the runoff should be consistent with what's at least no greater than it is now.
I mean, the goal is, we can't starve or flood a wetland, more or less is the principle.
But, I don't know if you're crossing, you know, one-third of the area, that's, that's going to do it every 300, 400 feet, or whatever it is.
My concern, from a design perspective, and I'm sure Jeff agrees, is erosion, creating, creating a problem. And so, as you know, shallow concentrated flow is the concern, and that's when erosion will begin. And, from my experience, that's a length of 50 feet. So, overland flow, sheet flow goes to shallow concentrated flow at 50-foot intervals.
You'll want to talk to Jeff, because your words make sense to me, but I don't know what they mean.
Yeah.
I, I think we could do that, our stormwater engineer, like, stands behind his work and thought, even without these slope breakers we added in, that, that detention basin, and the way things are sloped, really consistently, they're not like crazy contours, that it's all going to drain into that basin, and the basin's larger, larger than it needs to be.
We're not, we're not trying to fill the basin, we're trying to normalize and stabilize it, erosion issues and runoff.
And so, we put these three slope, four slope breakers in, and I guess if you want us to do more, we could.
They're not even staggered.
I guess the, the concern for erosion, I think, is different than the stormwater calcs, in my experience.
Correct.
Stormwater, we're attempting to make sure that the flow rate off the site in X, Y, or Z rain events is the same, so we capture the extra and bleed it off slowly from a pond.
Correct.
Most of this site is, you know, three and five-degree slopes at most, so most of the water is going to make it back into the ground before it makes it down here. But erosion, I think, is as much a construction sequence and monitoring question, to make sure you don't get something started, that you don't get a handle on quick enough, or say, after construction, and the grass is pretty good, but not all the way, we leave it alone for four months, we get a rainy, you know, fall, and before you know it, you've got, you know, a trench this wide sneaking through the rain.
Kind of hard to work under those panels, once this happens.
So, that's, I guess, that's a matter of the monitoring, we provide you with the site updates with the building inspector, that, you know, he's out there after rain events, and that we stabilize after, you know, after we clear things, did a good of a start on that as we can. But I think, separate from that, if, you know, you believe this, or you agree with the stormwater calculations on review, it is very difficult for my guys to stamp something that's extra conservative, or more conservative than they say it should be.
Right. So, I recognize that. And if it's not work, absolutely, I would agree. So,
So, comment number one, I want to make sure we get written responses to each of my comments, okay? I think that's essential for the file, so that we do, in fact, so if you address a comment, hey, sheet, C-103 shows X, Y, and Z, I need to see that in your responses. And that's historically how we do the review here. And then I'll say, comment acknowledged or addressed, and then it's done. I might have a follow-up comment, so absent having those responses, I don't really have something to work off of. And then, back to the stormwater, I, I plan on getting to this soon, I just haven't had a chance over the past month.
Yeah, when did they come in?
The fifth.
So, I think, I guess an agreement that would help for that, if we're all agreed that this plan set is the final, that we don't have any, you know, one or two road changes, that kind of stuff, then we can be sure that you won't have another update that will affect the stormwater runoff.
Right.
So, I think that's where we're at now.
Yep.
And then, I know I have these responses that are in writing, but I guess you don't have the same thing, or they weren't the right format?
Yeah, you should be responding to, as applicant.
Gotcha.
Kind of sort of, yeah.
I will say that the stormwater report includes all those comments.
See stormwater reports.
We can tell you where they are located in the storm report.
So, I think we can agree, Jeff, if we've got any concerns, I'd like to get that done in maybe the next week, so that if there are concerns, we can, over the holidays, obviously slowing us down, since I certainly don't think we're going to, you know, get a sign off tonight, because we have more homework, that we can get those done as early as possible.
I'm sensitive.
So, we can have a review next week, and Jeff will get you back everything in writing, and I think we'll be good to go.
Well, as I said, up on that road, just make sure there's enough room for like a bike truck or whatever to do, a U.E. and that kind of stuff.
So, the other thing.
They're not jammed up there.
I, I did have a red line on the original set that was submitted. I'll go through the revised set and have a redlined set of comments on the actual drawings. If you provide me a FedEx.
I saw that kind of, but I didn't see that line.
Yeah, they're in my office.
Okay.
If you give me your FedEx, I'll be happy to send that to you.
We'll send, take them straight to Jeff, so, that'll work.
Okay.
And I guess my goal would be, I guess, before we stop for any questions or comments.
Yep.
I'd like to be able to maybe knock this out next meeting, early January, I think we don't have too far to go.
Don't see a problem with that, and I'm happy to take a stab at a draft decision, too, at that point.
That would be, my amazing scenario is that we can get a draft decision that you guys can vote on, presuming yes, and sign that night, and we can just be out the door and out of your hair.
Yep.
And then, you know, always nice for me not to.
Sometimes dreams come true.
Sometimes, yes. And we've got, we've got the list of homeworks, and we'll knock that out. And I don't believe you have another meeting in December, do you?
No, we don't, no, first of all, it's in January, we have holidays.
And they know, you understand what Bill says he needs.
I believe, Jeff's been taking notes, forming everything up.
I don't even see a pen in this here. He's not even writing anything.
All right.
Audience.
Okay. Anybody else, questions, void, comments? Okay, so, we're looking pretty good, we're looking close, I think.
And the audience.
I think we have to.
I will look at the audience, asking the board of ours. All right, we'll take some questions from the audience, anybody has one, when I recognize you, please give your name and address, and then.
Yeah.
Question.
Walter Cavan, 271 Walla Lake Road, it's the, house right next to the access road.
Right here?
That's me.
Yes, sir.
Personally, I like the idea of the single road versus the double roads. And also, I ride my horse down that regional road, and it's, it's good for a horse.
Yeah.
It's not good for the rider, so.
A brave horse.
A sea horse.
The one thing, it's a little bit of a strange request I'll make, and I don't know what control you have over it or not, with the construction people, informing drivers that there are a lot of, there are a lot of horses along Walla Lake Road. And being courteous, you know, the state laws as far as horse, horses on the road go, you know, rider signals to anybody to slow down or stop, that by law, they have to do that.
That's by law, yeah.
Just making drivers aware of that, so they're not coming down and, you know, using the engine brakes as they pass horses and doing that kind of stuff. Again, I don't know what control you have over that, but if it's possible, that would be appreciated.
We can certainly add it to the construction brief, happy for you to come brief the crew as well. I mean, you're a neighbor, you get, you know, a fair amount, so you're about our closest, might be our closest neighbor. So, the answer is yes. If I can get your contact info.
Sure.
And, so I don't have to ambush you at your house, then we can get that toolled up.
Great, thank you.
What about signage, any signage, like?
I mean, we have the trucks, I can't put signs, I guess, unless you guys do off the property.
Put a bunch of signs, yeah.
Like, I'm only limited to my property.
Correct.
So, I guess I could go put one right here, from the south, but I don't have anything further north.
For the trucks entering?
Put them outside the road, temporarily.
Yes. Not down the street a little ways? Is it, it's at his property line?
No, typically, they would put it in the right of way, no different than we did for Sleepy Hollow, for example.
That's what I thought, those little red and white signs.
Orange.
Stantex.
Orange, whatever, colorblind.
So, you're not just going to put, like, you know where to, the signs aren't going to go just on the driveway? They're going to go like before the driveway, okay.
Yeah, so, I mean, I'm not the guy who normally does that, but yes, like, they'll be here, then you have them up and down the street.
Yeah, I thought you just said, I can only keep them on my property.
I can't, I can't go put them on the road, my, you know, myself, that's building permit, that's all the rest, highway department, et cetera.
Separate, sorry.
Yeah, so that's not.
It's worked with the highway department. Yeah. We'll let you put a sign up, don't worry.
Okay.
I just don't want to assume that I get to go like, put a flag on the side of the road, you know, without.
Courses crossing, or whatever, courses get the right of way, something like that.
Will do.
Thank you, sir.
Yep.
Okay, anything else? All right.
Something else?
Your question answered?
Yep.
All set, thank you. Anybody else? Yeah, name and address, please.
Mark Drudge, Three Angel Road. You said they're going to be five stories high?
Oh, no, sir.
They will not be higher than the trees?
No, no, sir, the elevation on the site is roughly fifty feet lower at the bottom than the top.
One of my questions was, I'm out daily on my pontoon boat, fishing, enjoying the lake, I don't want to see this stupid thing from the lake.
You won't. The trees over here are more than fifty feet high, and the road, of course, keeps going down, or the land to the lake. So, the, I guess the point of that was like, even up here, if you're thinking, looking from the lake, you cannot see over the trees, because they are taller than even the east side of the array.
Okay, and I got a couple more questions. What is this going to benefit anybody here? Mostly these people here and us. What am I going to benefit out of this? Other than a big ugly sight?
Should save the taxes.
I mean, there's.
The town's going to get taxes, but they're not going to lower my taxes.
But otherwise.
What they're going to get, I don't know.
It's the same as any other private development, if it were a subdivision or whatnot, it's the landowner's property, so.
Evan, what did you say the value of this property is construction-wise?
Ooh, I mean, if you're.
You said it before, but now it's less, it's smaller.
Yeah, it's smaller, but if you consider a dollar fifty a watt, and then, let's say, we can fit maybe ten million watts, so fifteen million dollar build cost.
Fifty million.
Fifteen.
Fifteen million.
What will the town benefit out of that as part of the taxes?
I'd have to talk with the assessor on the payment in lieu of taxes agreement, or they can be assessed every year, which is a giant nightmare. But that's, haven't talked about it yet.
Hopefully it is.
No schools. Hey, no schools.
Okay, let's, any.
Don't worry about it.
Okay, thank you, Mark. Anybody else in the audience have any comments or questions? Yes, sir.
Chuck Davis, Three Roslin Road.
Yep.
From the property line on Birch Hill, how far in?
Oh, yes, that was a question we had before. So, the closest one, I'm just thinking, I'm going to eyeball this. So, right here, the closest driveway point, which is right here before the trees start, is a little more than a hundred feet, I believe.
You said it starts, go ahead.
Yes, sir, and then it gets further away from there. At that point, you know, along the drive-in, we have the wooden fence roughly at that same hundred feet.
And my other question is, has, has the committee been at the land, the whole committee?
I haven't, no.
Have we?
Because we're talking about things, we should maybe look at it, too.
Walk the property.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Yes, ma'am.
Yeah, Jean Forget, 36 Birch Hill Road. I just wanted to know, how many acres of arrays now is that going to be?
I don't have the number on this plan set, which is what I need to remember, Jeff, you know what?
I think twenty-four.
Twenty-four is the new number now with this wetland out.
Now, I don't know, how does that compare? Does anybody on the board know how that compares to up by Bagmus, the array up there?
Oh, this is much larger than there.
How much is much larger?
At least, at three times.
Uxlocal.
Double, triple.
Bosmas?
Yeah.
Bosmas or Bagmus?
Bagmus.
Uxlocal, up there at the top of the hill on Oxbridge.
Four acres.
That's small.
That's small.
That's small compared to this.
Yeah, but that's visible.
So, so, so we're looking at, so how many, like, four times that, five times that? Give me an idea.
I'd say that, I'd say that's probably roughly about the same.
Twenty times that, I mean, I'm just, to me, that's a huge, what I, what I see when I drive by it, that's huge.
But you won't see this.
You won't see this.
That one.
You say that, okay, but I also, so, there'll be twenty-four acres of forest land that are completely cleared.
Twenty-four of how many acres there?
Now, all the, or all the stumps taken out, too?
They are ground down, but not ripped down.
When you do the work, you use, you talked about using a pile driver.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, now, just the other day, one of the neighbors used one for about four hours, right before Thanksgiving. That thing is so loud, I mean, so loud.
Are you using pneumatic ones?
Yeah, glibly, it's just a pneumatic press down.
So, if I may explain, because we just put up a high tunnel over at the farm, and it has pipes, and they drove them into the ground, two, two and a half feet, and the pipes are this thick, and they have this machine that looks like, you know, the guys go ice fishing, and they have that Curlicue thing, without that, it's like the top, and they go, ooh, and it's like, it's like a hammer drill.
Okay, so it's a hand, a handheld, it's not a machine.
There are a number of ways that it's done, pile driving is the old, just bang, bang, bang. Vibratory hammer is the other option, where it's just a big vibration press. And then the third version is a screw-based foundation, that is just a giant drill.
But now, when you say, you do expect to use a pile driver, and that would be a large machine.
I have to consider that to be the worst-case scenario, because we don't have, you know, a construction bid for this yet. You know, before we do that, like, for instance, we'll get out there, and once we've got everything lined up, we'll go big, three dozen pits, to get all the perfect soil quantities and fill them back in when we're done, but, and that's, we'll get the exact soil, and my guys, engineers, will tell us what the right foundation is for the soil. I would casually expect screws, which are pretty quiet, but I don't want to promise that to anyone, because that's not responsible.
What do you use on the rocks?
So, super rocky stuff, either the rocks get removed, but that's also why we like screws, because every screw is pre-drilled with a rock drill, so you just drill it right through.
Okay, so you don't, if you hit a rock, you would not use a pile driver?
So, with.
What would you use the pile driver for?
The foundations, and we'd remove the rocks, or when you hit a rock and you can't work with it, you end up supplementing with concrete around the base. And that's just one more thing to take out later, which is a pain in the butt, but that's how that works.
Also, you also say there's, there'll be no visual, right? Okay, most of the, there's, there's some evergreens, but like, behind our house, you can see, now that it's winter, you can see back. There'll be, it'll definitely be visible from my house in the wintertime.
I think it's possible, I don't know what else I can do besides.
It is possible, definitely.
I don't know what else I can do or would do with the property owner's rights to use the land, besides having, you know, two hundred and fifty-plus feet of trees that get left.
I just think the neighbors should be aware, that is, probably will be, I'm assuming it will be visible in the wintertime. You know, maybe not from the lake, but certainly from the road and some of the houses. Also, you talked about traffic, there's a bus stop up there with little kids, right on the road there? And you're going to have traffic going in and out from seven o'clock in the morning? Are they going to have, you're going to have signs that, that there are children there, and they need to slow down?
We can add it to the list of signs, happy to do it. Also happy to have a traffic director there, if the highway department slash town wants one, we will provide one.
Okay, just because, I mean, I think that for safety sake, with, we got a lot of little kids up there.
Certainly.
Let's see, okay, I still have more, okay? Yeah, explain to me what, exactly what is an inverter? Is that what that is, the box up there?
It's the boxes right here.
Okay, and what, what number house is that behind, can you tell me?
Not with this one, Jeff, could you take a look and see where that isolated wetland is off the first stream? It's directly north of that. An inverter is a box of electronics that changes the DC power made by the arrays to AC power that goes onto the utility grid.
Okay, now, how large, how large is that one going to be?
The full pad for one of those would be probably no wider than this room, and the box is probably four by eight on that.
And how tall is that?
Six or seven.
Okay, you know.
It looks like it's Eugene Ficello.
Pardon me?
Eugene Ficello?
Ficello, okay, that's right, that's my neighbor.
Okay, so that's right opposite.
So, that would be basically, you know.
Is it?
There's nothing in there that's dangerous, if something happened, a tree fell on it, there's nothing, there's no chemicals, no nothing, this is just.
Yes, ma'am, of course, if anything absolutely abnormal happens, everything shuts down. It just turns off, that means everything disconnects, the electricity no longer flows, and we get a phone call, because the electricity stopped flowing. And we go take a look.
When you stop and think of it, your phone charger is an inverter.
Yeah.
Your tangency.
So, I don't have, that would never cause a fire?
Every day when you plug your phone in.
I can't say anything will never.
Well, that's a little inverter, that's a big one.
Right, but still.
I mean, so I, that wouldn't, so I wouldn't have to be concerned about a fire with that?
Well, no, ma'am, I mean, anything can catch on fire, but nothing here is ever going to make it to the top, I mean, it's just, it'll shut down if it gets overheated.
Okay.
So, that's the kind of redundancy that's built in. These things tend to operate for years at a time without any actual issues.
Does it wirelessly call back if something shuts down?
Every, it cell phones in these redundantly, we have real time to the second monitor.
Is there screening, like that wood screening?
I don't believe so.
Can we add the wood screening, so it isn't just the chain link across the?
Oh, across the whole top is real tough, that's a long.
No, no, just at the invert.
Just at the inverter, sure.
Just put that wooden screening.
You want the wooden fence?
Just there, instead of the.
I would appreciate it.
Yeah, it'll have to be on the outside of the road, we've got to make sure we don't block access for fire.
Sure.
But Jeff, can we add it to the list, please, to just throw a wooden fence right there at the top?
Yeah.
We'll make that eight feet tall, should be taller than the items that don't block any.
Good, I guess.
And that also helps, you know, for noise, it's always nice to just throw stuff in the way.
Why not?
Can I ask one more question?
One more question, sure.
Okay, I got a whole list here. You talked about the stormwater, okay? Now, I know you put the streams in, okay, but like I said, we do live on Birch Hill Road, and we go back there a lot. And in the wintertime, when you have a melt, or when you have a lot of rain, there's not just two streams, you're looking at three or four. Now, are you, those, that'll be fixed, so that those runoffs won't happen, or can we expect them to still happen?
And I can't change what we didn't find, we found two identifiable intermittent streams, and the wetland scientists are the ones who.
Well, I can tell you personally, I mean, we have movies, okay, I can show you movies.
Going all across the whole land.
But I also can't, I mean, attest to stuff that is on the owner's property, that, I mean, people have seen, this is what.
Well, you're talking about erosion, I'm just letting you know that there are.
I mean, we will be changing the actual surface during logging, that will casually change.
Last time you went in October was before November, okay, and it was a little wet, but I'm, in like March, when things, the snow starts to melt, and if we have any rain, these things, they are, they're like, it's like whitewater down there. And there's big ones, and I'm just, you, I'll say there's only two streams, but, I mean, I, we live there, there's more than two streams behind there. You know, and so, if you're worried about erosion, I'm just concerned, when you do, are you going to do grading then, so that won't happen?
The slope of the land stays the same, minus the tree work.
Okay, so they can expect that'll still happen, and then it'll just slow it down, or the same amount of water will come down?
It just goes to grass, I mean, imagine if we were a farmer turning this into a field, that's what's happening. And then, we're putting a solar ray on top of it, but the field is the field, it's just a giant field of grass.
Stormwater management, it's, stormwater is, it's designed so, you can't increase the flow onto somebody else's property, it's designed to contain.
Okay, well, how do they determine what the flow is? I'm just, I mean, like you said, down onto Shore Road, I'm curious.
The giant document of calculations that is.
They've modeled it, and they've submitted a report that I need to review.
All right, okay, thank you. Okay, that's all, yeah, that's all.
Okay, we do have another public hearing that we have to get to, so, I'll take one more question, if anybody has one.
Seven o'clock?
That's good.
Okay, all right, name none?
Oh, January eighth, seven o'clock.
Make a motion.
I was just going to confirm, by the eighth, if we could move, if that's necessary, to have the draft ready as well. So, hopefully, we could knock that out.
Well, Bill gets everything he needs.
That's a process we'll, we'll work through, and I'm committed to get it done for the next meeting, but, you know, it's going to be, depending on responses, depending on the calculations, you know.
We will, we will do our best.
I appreciate it.
Yeah, I'd like to see it banged out at the next, at our next meeting, but as long as everything's ready to go, we'll take a vote on it.
Sure.
And make a motion and continue the public hearing for ASD Wallen Solar LLC to January eighth, two thousand and nineteen, at seven PM.
I'll second that.
I hope she made my trace, and I can make my mic see, any further discussion, opposed or favor?
Aye. Aye.
Opposed, abstained. So our next meeting will be on that date.
Yeah.
Yeah, it is a horse.
All right.
Half hour, fifteen minutes.
Fifteen, and then we-
I'm a selfless man and a seeder in that area.
I can't believe we have a-
Good morning, everybody.
Keep it some point.
Public address.
I know, I've been on the hill.
Public address.
Public address.
Public address.
Public address.
We'll see that, we can see that.
I know, that'd be good.
Eric, if you talk to John about the, uh, John Furno, John Furno's sign for horses.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
I was, uh, I was like my landlord, I was on a great land.
Oh, yeah, yeah. You can talk to John, excuse me, talk to John Furno.
I've seen, I've seen him too, man.
I had a great time.
Yeah, John Furno, take me down.
Highway Department.
Yeah, highway. Yeah, right across, something, Dr. Furno.
Maybe if they're very responsive, yeah.
Yeah, that's all covered.
Yeah.
Yeah, we got, we're like the horse.
Coming in?
I saw the hatchet.
Oh, my God.
We're a real small group.
Another guy with a stream, he was breaking up some big rocks to make sure not, yeah.
I didn't wanna, I didn't wanna-
That was different.
But still, it's-
Are you sure? I asked you if it was a pile driver, you said yes.
It's the reason why.
Accessory apartment.
Hey, you guys stay by eight o'clock?
All right.
Thank you.
All right, next item, eight o'clock. Public hearing. Reed Development Corporation application for an accessory apartment special permit, fifty-six West.
Yeah.
Ready, boy?
Yeah.
In accordance with the title of Douglas accessory apartment zoning by law and Massachusetts general laws, chapter forty-eight, Douglas Planning Board is holding a public hearing on the application of Reed Development Corporation for an accessory apartment special permit. Property location is fifty-six West Street, assesses map one sixty-two, parcel fifteen in Douglas, Mass. And all parties being held on Tuesday, December eleventh, two thousand and eighteen, at eight PM in the community meeting room, Municipal Center, Twenty-Nine Depot Street, Douglas, Mass. Copy of the application may be reviewed in the community development department during regular business hours. Any person interested or wishing to be heard on the proposed plan should appear at the time and place designated. Ernest Marks, Chairman, Douglas Planning Board, public hearing is now open.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Robert Forte. That's my wife, Adriana. We're building home there at fifty-six West Street, and we, Lex, you're permitted to build an accessory apartment in there as well.
All the things and everything are in this packet?
Yeah.
Everybody had a chance to get over?
On the truck.
Good for them.
Yeah.
I can't wait till one forty gets sold, so it changes to grass.
Taxes are all paid on this property?
So the six up and eight?
I don't know.
I think it's, it's one of the-
Taxes are, current one's property, yeah.
I think it looks great.
What is, what are these guys on the atom?
Yes, I bought them with great deal. Underneath the square footage, underneath all the requirements. I don't really think-
If you turn the page, I think.
Yep.
Break test.
I don't have a problem with it either.
Yeah.
Great, great package.
Probably will be, that's what I say.
Anybody else need more time?
Look at the side of the-
Builder or designer?
Pardon?
Builder or engineer?
Me.
I'm the customer.
He's the one who limited it.
Nice drawing.
Bill, any comments or questions?
So who, who's the owner?
Reed Development Corp. Cliff, Cliff's the owner of the law.
So Cliff's selling it to these people?
Yes, he's the buyer. He has signed the application.
So, so-
I see no problem.
Of the board allows it, make a motion to grant the accessory-
It's a public hearing, so I have to see the questions in the allowing first. Nobody else have any questions on the board? Does anybody in the audience have any questions or comments on this project? Seeing none, hearing none, okay.
Sorry about that.
I have one.
You have one?
You sit right by me. Um, maybe I just can't find it on the right page here, but where is the accessory apartment physically?
In the basement.
Basement, yeah.
Eight-three.
Yeah. Turn it on.
Oh, these would be the new order of the house. They're doing this ahead of time. That's why I was confused, yeah. But they're not, it's not, this is not his daughter. Correct. It's these folks. Okay, anybody else have any questions?
Go ahead, Tracy.
Go ahead, Tracy.
Make a motion to grant the accessory apartment.
Close the public hearing.
Close the public hearing.
Okay, motion's been made to close the public hearing?
Do it.
Seconded by Tracy, seconded by Mike Z. Any further discussion?
You can do a call.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, motion carries. Okay, Trace.
Make a motion to grant the accessory apartment, special apartment for fifty-six West Street.
With our standard conditions.
With standard conditions.
I'll second that.
Motion made by Tracy, seconded by Mike Z. Any further discussion?
Um, I would propose that we draft up the decision prior to the next meeting and then have the board come in and sign it.
Okay.
Yep.
I agree.
Sure, no problem.
We don't have to wait the whole meeting, the whole month, yeah. Yep, everybody's okay with that?
We're good.
All right?
Good.
Motion made and seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, motion carries.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Look forward to moving into town.
Welcome to Douglas.
Thank you.
We need people on concon.
Okay.
We'll take anybody, almost anybody.
Almost anybody.
Almost anybody.
All right. Next item is, not to waste time, it's almost here.
Uh, do you wanna do item three on discussion?
Request for release of covenant Stonegate Estates, Cobblestone Lane, lots sixteen, eighteen, nineteen, and twenty.
Okay, this is for the last roadway. Actually, you know, they posted surety, and we've
had surety for quite some time. I'm not sure why they never requested lot releases associated with the lots within this section of the road, but, um, they didn't, so we let them know that since they're looking at the Maytown meeting for road, road acceptance. Um, so that's why they submitted a request for release of those remaining lots that had not been yet released. Um, now, given that, I do wanna point out that there is some material that's stockpiled on one of the lots that are subject to this, so I would suggest that um, we, we issue the release, which has been reviewed and approved by Town Council for form. Um, however, we have the condition that the builder, developer, remove the materials that are stockpiled on one of these lots from the site.
Okay.
Is, um, one of those, has, has these three lot, four lots, have, they've been built upon?
No.
No?
No.
They've been sold, which they shouldn't have been because-
That's what I mean.
This should've prevented the sale, but it, but it didn't.
Yeah, so I'm kinda confused, Mike.
Um-
How did that happen?
Exactly. Lawyers.
So, even though it's on a deed, that it's still-
Correct.
But, but one of them's-
Somebody bought something that, that they can't do nothing with.
Right there.
Right here.
Okay.
I'm right here.
And there's, and there's a well, there's a well on one of them.
Yep, I'm right here. Did all that.
And that ties into the materials that are stockpiled on one of these lots, so.
Yeah, which is, which is now, whose responsibility to take the materials away?
The developers.
Yep.
Okay.
Still part of the project, I believe, so.
So we're gonna tie that to-
You know, we have surety, and I think that's associated with the surety, so, you know, I'll advise them that the board wants it removed.
What's the amount of surety, do you know, around about?
Uh, it's in the ten, it, it's nearly a hundred thousand, I wanna say, off the top of my head.
Okay.
It, I haven't looked at it in years, so.
Okay. And did we, did they file the application for road acceptance and everything?
They did, and we're on track for that.
Is there any additional reports?
Cause I know they-
There's some work that needs to get done, yep.
Detention ones, they've all been done.
And, and it's minor work. It's, uh, you know, brush cutting and stuff like that.
That's all.
Yeah, I mean, I've seen a boat with the, the removal of the dirt.
Yeah, condition, condition.
Yeah, it's pipes, it's asphalt, yeah, stuff like that. Construction debris.
Equipment.
All right, Tracy.
Then equipment.
Make a motion to grant the request for the release of covenant for Stonegate Estates, Cobblestone Lane, lots sixteen, eighteen, nineteen, twenty, with the condition that the construction debris be removed-
From lot sixteen.
From lot number sixteen before we give them the covenant.
I'll second.
Okay, motion made by Tracy, seconded by Mike.
Yep.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, motion carries.
Great, thanks.
Thank you.
We'll have that signed.
Thank you.
Yep. Yeah, cause I, I thought they were sold.
The attorneys aren't present, so I think they can just push people around.
That's right. It says estate. A and R plan, David and Susan Maru, Southeast Main Street.
Very, very sad.
That's good.
Do we, do we get her name for the record?
Oh, well, okay, good evening. You all set? Ready?
We're ready.
Margaret Bacon, Civil Site Engineering, and I'm here representing, uh, Missel Maru, and this is regarding an A and R plan for, uh, lot seven and seven, lot seven A and seven B on Southeast Main Street. And we were here about a month ago, uh, and there was some issues regarding the access and the easement, and I believe, uh, between, uh, Mr. Cundis' comments and coordinating with, uh, our client and his attorney, I believe we've got all the comments addressed that you brought up at the last meeting, access, creating an easement and giving the lot seven A.
So, is that correct?
Um, the issue at the last time, um, was the question on access. Uh, the plan showed excessively steep grades along the entire frontage, and it showed a proposed easement across the abutting lot. And the issue raised was, can you grant an easement to yourself when you're carving out these two lots? And, you know, the board, I think, had concern ultimately about the accessibility of the lot, um, given that you couldn't grant an easement to yourself. Um, so, since then, it was made clear to me from the applicant that, in fact, there is an existing house on one of the lots, and there's an existing driveway that's, that's already built that goes to the newly created lot. Um, so while there may not be an easement per se currently, I'm not sure. Is there, Margaret?
Easement?
Is there currently an easement, huh?
No, we haven't created that easement yet, no.
Okay, so, so that's where the question lies.
Isn't, isn't there, um, on Webster Road, I believe, isn't there an easement, um, allowing access to abutting property off of the same driveway on Webster Road? Between the sawmill and the blinking light, there's, uh, at least two properties that are similar to that. One that goes in and feeds about four or five houses in there, and the other one that actually feeds, like a common driveway that feeds both houses.
Oh, the ones that are up on the cliffs there?
Yeah, there's that, there's-
That's a common driveway.
There's two side by side.
That's a common driveway.
Yeah, it's a common driveway, it's not an easement, it's a common driveway.
And it's, this is for A and R.
Plus they're A and R, yeah, right there.
We have to, yeah, we have to make sure for access.
Mm-hmm.
So what's your game plan after this? This is just gonna be, the access easement is just noted as dependent on driveway utility easement or seven B? If that satisfies it, the attorney said?
Well, I'll let, uh, Mr. Lane address that.
This is- Can you just give your name, Henry, for the record? I'm sorry, Henry Lane. Thank you. Um, we're really getting into the weeds here, but there's a, just a very technical catch-22 here. You can't give yourself an easement over your own property. So since this, these two lots are owned by the same person, or the same, actually, it's a trust, but, uh, they can't give themselves an easement because they own the property. They can only create the easement when the lot's conveyed. But we can't convey the lot until we get the plan signed. So, it's like, you know, the cart before the horse. The, the plan is designed and it shows the easement, and we can't get a building permit, obviously, until there's an easement. But we can't create the easement until the plan is endorsed. So, the easement is shown, and it's actually been constructed, but we can't actually create it as an entity until the plan is signed because we own the both lots. So what happens is, when, is it B, I think, gets sold?
B.
B.
No, it's A.
A.
When A is sold, it's conveyed with the easement as shown on the plan, which is what the plan shows. But we can't actually do that until we create the deed for A, and we can't do that until you guys sign the plan. So it's, but the, but the technical enforcement is, the building inspector can't give a building permit for lot A unless an easement has already been recorded. So, there's no real risk. It's just the mechanics of, of, um-
What statute is that, Henry?
What statute is what?
That says the building inspector can't issue a permit until that easement's reported.
Because building permanent, the building inspector has to determine that there's access before he can give a building permit. But the signature on, on Form A does not render the lot, the lot buildable. Well, it's that, when you endorse a Form A, all you're saying is that you're not creating a subdivision, okay? So even though the Form A is signed, the building inspector has to make an independent determination that the lot is in fact buildable. You don't decide whether the lot's buildable or not. That's the building inspector's job.
Of course, I agree with you entirely on that.
All you do is certify that, in fact, this is not a subdivision, and obviously it's not.
And that it meets our regu- Looking at the ten percent.
And it meets our regulations.
They're looking at the accessibility.
Yeah, and as I say, that's what the plan shows, shows that there isn't, there is an easement, the driveway's been constructed, and obviously, as I say, the enforcement is the building inspector, when he, before he can issue a building permit, has to determine that the, that the easement has been created. But we can't create it until the plan is signed. But it's, it's kind of a catch-22, but that's-
When was the driveway constructed?
On the plan that we signed, it's stated in there that the easement is being created for that.
Yeah, there's a couple notes on the plan.
Yeah. We made it very clear that we, you know, the intention is this is not gonna be a buildable lot until that easement goes with the lot. You can't, can't use a lot.
I, I certainly got a level of comfort knowing that the driveway was in fact constructed already.
Yeah, I do too.
I don't-
I don't remember that coming in front of the concon.
It has, it did go in.
Okay.
Yep. Actually, uh, yeah, it did. Yeah, last year. Actually, we have the approved plan.
Two years ago, cause the house was built.
Two years ago?
Okay. Hey, Boyd, what's your pleasure?
I mean, I agree with, with Henry saying where it's a catch-22. It's something that was written that they didn't think about it when it came down. I mean, the driveway's in.
Yeah.
What else is there?
Anybody else have any comments or questions?
As long as it meets the requirement for A and R.
Yeah, it does, it does meet our requirements.
Right, and if they wanna sell it, it's-
Along the frontage.
It's, right.
There's no access along the frontage.
Sell an undeveloped lot and call it between parties.
There's no access along the front, I mean, you could build a crossing.
It's a wetland. Right, you have to build a crossing, that's-
Yeah.
I'd rather see, I'd rather see this than crossing.
But we can approve this without that driveway, right? Cause that's our, as a board.
You could, but it's, the question is about access.
But are we, have, do we have to have, is it burden on, I'm trying to learn what we do.
Yes, yes.
Is it upon us to, to, in an A and R review?
That's why we have them show wetlands within the build, within the, between the frontage and the buildable portion of the lot.
Right, and the wetlands all right here.
As well as slopes. So they show slopes in excess of ten percent, which, in this case, the entire frontage is, has both those conditions, I think.
Correct.
So it wasn't clear on the prior submittal that there was, actually was a driveway there, and the question was, it was proposed easement, so the question-
Yeah, so we clarify the, we clarify the label.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, it meets the-
Does it?
Needs, I mean-
I mean, it doesn't really, for an A and R.
Sure.
It doesn't really, though.
Yeah, it really does.
You think it does?
Absolutely.
So through the frontage that you're using for the lot, you have access through that frontage of the lot that we are? The lot that we are approving is their front, is their frontage through the access of that lot?
Yeah, but do we approve a lot, and is it our business where they actually build
Hey, Boyd, what's your pleasure?
I mean, I agree with Henry's saying where it's a catch-22. It's something that was written, that they didn't think about it when it came down. I mean, the driveway's in. Anything else?
Anybody else have any comments or questions?
As long as it meets the requirement for A and R.
It does, it does meet our requirements.
Right, and if they wanna sell it, it's...
There's no access along the frontage. There's no access along the frontage. I mean, you could build a crossing.
You have to build a crossing, that's... I'd rather see, I'd rather see this than a crossing.
We can approve this without that driveway, right? Because that's our, as a board.
You could, but it's, the question is about access.
But are we, do we have to have, is it burdened on, I'm trying to learn what we do.
Yes, yes.
Is it upon us to, in an A and R review?
That's why we have them show wetlands within the, between the frontage and the buildable portion of the lot, as well as slopes. So, they show slopes in excess of 10%, which, in this case, the entire frontage is, has both those conditions, I think. So, it wasn't clear on the prior submittal that there actually was a driveway there, and the question was, it was proposed easement. So, the question...
We clarify the label.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, it meets the...
Does it? I mean, it doesn't really, for an A and R.
Sure.
It doesn't really, though.
Yeah, it really does.
You think it does?
Absolutely.
So, through the frontage that you're using for the lot, you have access through that frontage? Of the lot that we are? The lot that we are approving is their frontage, is their frontage through the access of that lot?
Do we approve a lot, and is it our business where they actually build a house, or not?
Yes, it is. That's A and R. Approval not required.
Can't someone buy and just use the land without building a house?
You could, you could cut this law off.
By endorsing this, it's a buildable lot.
If it meets the requirements.
But the building inspector then will chime in after, no?
Don't we make notes on, in past plans that when we did an A and R or the proportion of land that was in question, that it was, you know, marked in some way? So, I see the point where you're talking about the grade and the access. So, it does meet the frontage, right? It does have a point of access which would be using an easement or common driveway to it at some point, which we've allowed on Webster Road, a common driveway accessing, so they'll show the driveway.
So, yeah, but the ax, the access through the frontage that is through the brand-new lot, how do you get over that you can't, you're not actually using that frontage to access the buildable portion?
You're not using that frontage.
And that is okay in A and R. Bill, could you tell me, please?
Yes, I'll expand. Okay, I'll read the regulations. The definition for access. Each lot proposed for acceptance in a definitive plan or a plan not requiring subdivision approval, 81P, shall have direct access for use by emergency and other vehicles from the street on which the frontage is measured.
Which it does.
So, just letting you know that it doesn't exactly meet the requirements of an A and R plan.
There is no requirement in Douglas that your access be through your frontage. Some towns have that in their bylaws that require. This just says it has to be from the street. Okay, this access is from the street.
Through the frontage.
No, it doesn't say.
It just said frontage.
It says the street on which the frontage is. It doesn't say it has to be through the frontage.
Can you read that again?
It has to be from the street on which the frontage is.
That's how you get common driveways.
Okay. Access. Each lot proposed for acceptance in a definitive plan or a plan not requiring subdivision control, not requiring subdivision control, 81P, shall have direct access for use by emergency and other vehicles from the street on which the frontage is measured.
Just says from the street. I'm ready to make a motion.
Yeah, it doesn't say direct access along that street. I mean, I guess that's what they mean, but they didn't say it that way.
I don't have a problem with it.
I'm just clarifying that that's what we go by, what for, especially for Aaron, because we've had that question before.
But I think if you take a look at what was approved with Webster Road...
I don't set precedents.
I'm just saying, it's very similar to that.
It's just what we're, what's in front of us right now.
Anybody else have any questions on it?
Chime in on this, bros. I mean, this is, we're conflicted here, so can we ask our legal group to chime in on this? You know, the town's council, on clarity on what this means?
I can understand what it's saying.
Yeah.
But we're conflicted. I mean, we're obviously not all unanimous on the understanding of this, and I'm not.
I'll tell ya, I have a tendency to agree with Henry on the interpretation. As I read this...
I'm just clarifying.
However, you know, again, I want to reiterate, when you have a proposed easement, that's where the problem comes in. I'm certainly more comfortable with the fact that we have an existing road or driveway that's been constructed, and, you know, it gives a level of assurance that, you know...
Proposed is not the same as actual.
Right.
And the actual driveway, the...
So, it is available, that's there. It's available to this lot, gives access to the street in which fire apparatus could get to everything else.
You have a point of access.
The street provides that.
Yeah. I don't have a problem with it.
I'll make a motion to endorse the A and R plan for David and Susan LaRue on Southeast Main Street.
Want to second that?
I'll second it.
Motion made by Mike C., seconded by Les. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose?
Aye.
I abstain.
Abstain?
What do you got for the a's here, so?
There's enough.
There's enough to pass.
I'm gonna abstain, because I'm conflicted, just because other people are conflicted.
All right, so, one, two, three, four. Aye.
He said aye.
I didn't hear him say aye, though. Okay, and one no?
One no.
And one abstain.
Abstain just because I...
Abstaining, all right, so...
Doesn't matter anyway.
All right, so, ideas? One no and one abstention. The no is Tracy, the abstention is Aaron.
Correct.
Okay, the motion carries. All right, you're all set.
Okay, so, will I give you the Mylar?
Yeah.
You can...
You sign it now, or do I come back and get it later, or do you want to do this?
You can stop in tomorrow if you want.
Sure. That's all right with you, Dave? Okay.
Okay, you got, how many copies?
Two, I got two paper copies and a Mylar. How many you need?
We need...
We need four prints and one Mylar.
Four paper copies and a Mylar, so if you can bring two...
I'll just bring two more in the morning, is that all right? Or, here, well, here's another one right here. There's three.
That's three, yeah, okay.
You gotta wet-sign them all?
No, we stamp, we stamp the other ones. When you come in to sign the accessory apartment, I'll have you stamp.
Yeah.
Bring in a couple more tomorrow.
Bring in a couple more tomorrow, then we'll get the rest of them done. The Mylar's the one you wanna get back, we'll sign that.
Right, right, sure, okay, all right. Very good, thank you.
All right, thank you.
Good night.
A bunch of other plans assigned tonight, too, right, in Mylars?
Oh, yeah, Bella Woods.
Bella Woods, right, so we'll do that at the end of the evening, nobody leave.
I'm leaving probably, just to let you know. At nine o'clock.
I'll think about this, Misses, and I'll let you know.
We're already running behind.
Yeah.
Five minutes.
We always run behind. All right. Next one is public hearing at 8:30. Need a little barrel, probably.
This guy's with...
Their documentation.
Yeah. Is he in Churchill?
Yeah.
His apartment, West Street.
Oh, he's once in West Street?
Do I have a copy of the public hearings? No, this one?
There.
How many acres is this?
Fifty, forty acres.
How many acres?
All right, we ready, Boyd? In accordance with the Town of Douglas zoning bylaw, Section 9.4, site plan review, Douglas Planning Board is holding a public hearing on the application of Douglas Renewables LLC for a permit that consists of a 6.5-megawatt DC ground-mounted solar 4 over 8 energy system within the approximately 61-acre property zoned as rural agriculture. Both sites located at 170 West Street assesses map 160 and 173 parcels 2 and 14, as shown on a plan prepared for Douglas Renewables LLC, entitled Douglas Renewables Solar for 170 West Street, by Beals &amp; Thomas, Inc., 144 Turnpike Roads, South Borough, Mass., dated November 16, 2018. Public hearing is being held on Tuesday, December 11, 2018, at 8:30 PM in the Community Meeting Room, 29 Depot Street, Douglas, Mass. A copy of the plan may be viewed in the Community Development Department during regular business hours. Any person interested or wishing to be heard on the proposed plan should appear at the time and place designated. Sirus Marks, Chairman of Douglas Planning Board, public hearing is now opening. We have somebody presenting.
Ernie?
Yes.
I just need to ask the applicant, are you guys with the next stamp, LLC?
I'm, my name is Jeff Murphy, I'm the civil engineer for the project with Beals &amp; Thomas, and here with me tonight is Julie Bozeman, representing the applicant, Douglas Renewables LLC. Next stamp.
Next stamp.
Next stamp.
Yes.
Are you gonna recuse yourself?
Yeah. Let the record show that Les is recusing himself from the meeting.
He gets a lead.
All right.
Good night, Les.
Are you leaving the meeting?
He's going for the paperwork. Ernie, over there, paperwork.
All right, we ready? Okay, go ahead, sir. Thank you.
So, as mentioned, this is the Douglas Renewables Solar Project at 160, 170 West Street. Just to go over, this is the index plan here. I just want to review the kind of orientation of the plan here. North is to the left on the plan, so this parcel is located to the south of West Street. The property, the solar facility will be accessed via West Street at this location here. The sheets of the plan set that I'll be reviewing with you will start here with the northernmost section of the project, and then we'll move over to here, just to the south, and then the third sheet, the layout of the plan, will consist of this westerly portion of the array. Some of the key elements of the project are the ground-mounted solar array panels, which occupy a roughly 23-acre footprint, and then the project's encircled by a seven-foot-high chain-link security fence. It's about 31 acres within that fence limit. Then there's a permanent gravel-impacted access drive that comes in from West Street, and it comes into the site and jogs, and then there is a permanent cul-de-sac here. As I'll get into more detail on the future plans, the access road is 15 feet wide and has been designed with a turning radii for a WB67 tractor-trailer truck that's gonna be bringing in the supplies for the array equipment itself. So...
You're saying the whole road's only 15 feet?
The width of the access drive is going to be 15 feet coming in from West Street, and then at these turns, it's going to be wider to allow for the off-tracking from the trailers for the large trucks.
Were you here for the other hearing?
I was here for the other hearing, and I did, I will try to...
Who's Gander, I guess?
Fifteen feet, you ain't gonna cut the mustard.
Right now.
Right. So...
All right, so go forward, yeah.
As I've said, now that we can take a look into the first plan here, so the site will be accessed via West Street here. The access to our site is fairly constrained. We are filing, we have filed a notice of intent with the Conservation Commission. We do have a wetland crossing that is necessary for us to access the property. We have a wetland system here that is fed from an adjacent pond here to the west with an intermittent stream that flows here to the west, westerly direction. So, we have the wetland system that basically cuts off our access to the site. So, as such, we've designed a short-span timber bridge that's been designed to meet the Massachusetts stream-crossing standards that we'll be discussing with the Conservation Commission, as well as a pertinent wetland replication here for the impacts associated with this crossing. Again, our entrance here is rather constrained. We're avoiding the other border vegetated wetlands here that takes up a good portion of the frontage of the site here. As noted, a 15-foot gravel access drive is the standard that we've used on many solar projects throughout the Commonwealth in the past. It's been designed for WB67 tractor-trailer access. So, we've designed it as such, and this first portion of the access drive will consist of, you know, this, this section here is approximately 1,300 feet from the West Street back to where the panels start. The entire site is currently wooded, pretty much all around. The limits of clearing are associated with the proposed solar panel layout, and that's been specifically determined by the solar designers to reduce not impact shading on the panels. So, the proposed tree lines that you'll see on the plan here around the panels are based upon that shading impact for the clearing. And we've also designed two large infiltration basins, as well as several swales and other features that we'll get into on the grading and drainage plan. The connection from the electrical equipment that'll be more interior of the site will be accomplished primarily by underground electrical conduit. However, this last section outside the fence to West Street is likely going to be overhead wires, particularly because of this wetland crossing. We wanna keep that above the wetlands and don't wanna create any additional impacts there. And then, in this vicinity, just outside the fence, will go to underground electrical conduit.
Does that road go around?
Yes. Yes, so as, this, this, this road is the same continuity. This is the main gate of the facility here, 20-foot-wide gate. The entire project is encircled by a seven-foot-high chain-link security fence, which is the standard for projects of this nature. The gate is going to feature a Knox box, as well as a sign with emergency contact information that was requested by the fire chief. I had specifically called him before, working on this project, to try to flush out some of the considerations with regards to, you know, emergency access and things of that nature.
Have you gotten a response back from the fire chief?
The only response that we formally received was through an email chain that I believe may have been directed to you, Bill, where he said, you know, let's talk about the grass situation, which I guess I wanna get into.
But there's no second means on this, right? You don't have any...
We do not have any other access into the site, and we can only come in through the north, which is where our frontage is.
Could you, I know you're on it. Can you do me a favor? Can you back up and show us the nearest houses? Like, go to a smaller scale, to show where people are and where the streets are again?
Certainly, so, this is West Street here. The nearest houses to the project, there is a house on this parcel here situated...
Where is the house, is it located?
It's not shown on the plans, but I can tell you it's roughly in this kind of rear portion of the lot here.
Put some pen on there, go ahead.
Sure. It's more or less in this area.
Just look here.
And from this house to where the panels start is about 900 feet, distance-wise. And there is another house to the west, which again, is off our locus, but it is somewhere over here, and it is about 600 feet away from the project, that the western edge. So, the remaining areas around the project have approximately 600 to 900 feet of wooded buffer surrounding the project. So, we don't anticipate that it will be seen from any other location, whether it be West Street or any of the homes around the project, because the whole area outside is wooded, is going for this way, about 600 feet plus.
Is there a house, any houses directly across entrance?
Yes.
There are, there are.
We go back to that, West Street?
163, our drivers will face each other.
Sure. So, if you look at it overall, there are some houses here along West Street.
Can you do us a favor, like we had in the last print? Any houses that are directly, like, across?
Right.
Any houses that are around anything on the entrance?
Put them in.
We wanna see the houses on the front.
Want to see them on the plans?
The distances. Right next to the street, too.
Any of those, anything around that, we'd like to see it, please.
He's affected most.
Yeah, okay.
So, moving on, we've got, our permanent access drive is going to come in here, and it's gonna turn here to the east. So, we have two primary equipment pad locations. This is where the electrical equipment's going to be, your inverters and such. And there's also a battery storage system that's proposed on this site, which is going to be, it's gonna consist of a structure that'll be raised off the ground a couple feet and sit on cylindrical concrete footings. And it kind of looks similar to, I would say, like a shipping container, but it's raised off the ground several feet, and that houses the proposed battery storage equipment. And then here, once again, the, there's gonna be a turnaround here at this equipment pad, and there's also gonna be a much larger cul-de-sac that's gonna allow for the tractor-trailers to turn around when they're coming in delivering material for the site.
A big of a turnaround is that going there?
I wanna say it's probably about 100-foot diameter on this thing. It's been sized, we ran an auto turn for the tractor-trailer to come in and be able to kind of swoop around and turn and go back out. So, we did kind of account for that. I do wanna mention that this is something that we've labeled on the plans as a dashed line, and we've called it out as a 12-foot-wide grassed access route. However, a maybe more appropriate term is a stabilized grass drive. Essentially, it's going to be constructed in a similar manner to the gravel drive, except, you know, we'll be using in situ soil material, the sand and gravel on the site, and they're gonna grade it out and compact it, and they're just gonna put a thin layer of loam and seed on there. And the idea is we wanna vegetate the site to the maximum extent we can. We wanna hydro-seed this, we wanna get it stabilized, we wanna minimize runoff, and that's really where we're going with that, is we really wanna try to provide as much vegetative cover on this in the post-development.
So, there was no detail on the grass drive, correct?
Correct, and we can certainly provide that. It's something that we've done on other projects, and we're happy to provide a detail that shows that, you know, that compacted gra, you know, in situ material, and then they'll put the loam and seed on top of that. And again, it's just to provide vegetation so that we're...
So, wouldn't it be easier just to have it be a gravel drive instead of putting the loam over it and seeding it?
The concern there is just, again, from a stormwater perspective, we're trying to minimize the amount of gravel and were, you know, smaller impervious areas on the site. That was kind of the basis behind it. I mean, it's, it's not anticipated to be used with any regularity.
It's not improved.
It's definitely gonna be a drivable route. And again, that's kind of the basis behind it in terms of the stormwater.
So, you're saying you're gonna have it, what, 12 feet? I see it right here. Why don't you go 360 around the top half of your road?
Around this part? So, as I will show you on the other plan, that portion of the site is probably the steepest part of the site. So, we're making an effort here to minimize the site grading, and there's a very steep gradient between here and here. So, when we start looking at the proposed grading, again, I'm just kind of jumping around here.
That's all right.
So, this is why we left this part out. We did provide a turnaround down at this section. So, that's, that was the reason why we didn't go 360. It was just because we wanna minimize the grading.
What's the drop over there? What's the increments that you're showing on your grading?
On the contour interval? They are two-foot contours on this plan.
So, what, say the change in the center of that to the edge of that, going up? So what say the change in the center of that to the edge of that going up? Let's say going east, from the center of that going east. What's the change in elevation?
From the bottom all the way to the top?
Say just the middle portion to where the road is.
Middle from here to here. So the grades in this section of the site are about 650 and we're down about 590.
60 foot.
So we've got a pretty decent grade change across. This site is basically on top of a hill and it's, we have slopes kind of going, radiating in different directions outward.
So erosion's a potential problem.
We have designed a robust drainage system, which is consisting of a number of conveyance capturing and conveyance swales. And I'll start, let's back up here to the site entrance here. So this is where you come into the site. This is where the first of our two large infiltration basins that will be constructed. It's going in the location of kind of a natural plateau where the hill kind of levels out. We've done soil testing in this area as well and we've set the elevation of that basin to maintain the required two-foot offset to groundwater. And this is the primary area of the most grading where we have to construct our access road with a 10% maximum grade. So we have a cut here that's going to require us to cut into the existing grade. And as you can see, we've provided a swale here with check dams every 50 feet to slow down and dissipate that stormwater runoff as well as a smaller settling area here just to kind of dissipate it and then a culvert that will convey that flow beneath to the infiltration basin. And similarly on this side, we have another swell that's going to capture any runoff that comes across. Fortunately, we're working with the contours of the land here. It's already kind of flowing in this direction and now we're capturing that edge runoff and we're conveying it to that infiltration basin and that's going to mitigate the stormwater runoff from this portion of our site here. This area here is the top of the hill and then it kind of slopes this way and then we have the rest of it sloping more in the westerly direction. So again, we've provided, we've put swales where during, to intercept natural flow paths to be able to capture and convey in a safe manner that runoff by providing check dams at regular intervals to slow down and dissipate the runoff. And we've designed our stormwater BMPs to mitigate the proposed runoff associated with the project. So at the westerly end of the project here is our other large infiltration basin. As you can see, all these swales, these swales here along the access road will go to a sedimentation basin. This is going to allow the water to kind of settle out and dissipate in this kind of natural flat valley here that we have. And then there's going to be a pipe that's going to convey it down following this, you know, access route. And then there's going to be another kind of slowdown dissipation area here with riprap and a pipe that will lead into another riprap swell and our large infiltration basin. And we've provided a very robust 15-foot-wide top-of-berm width on this. The basins will be designed with an impervious core that'll be keyed in to the existing grades out here. And I should mention that, I think this was something that was discussed during the other presentation. So as you can see, we have a limit of grading primarily within the fenced area. There are a few kind of peripheral areas, but any areas between the limits of clearing and the fence line that are not going to be graded in any way, those areas, we have a note on the plan indicating that the trees will be cut in these areas here, but they will not be stumped and the, you know, they will essentially just cut the trees off so the...
Sunlight gets the things.
The soil and root mat that's there will remain. They're not going to, you know, rip all that up. Within this area, it will be disturbed. However, the intent is to try to maintain as much of that perimeter vegetation as we can and then over time, this kind of peripheral area will be allowed to kind of grow up with, you know, native vegetation and then maintained as needed. Within the fence area, they're going to apply, you know, a native seed mix of hydroseed and applying that to get good vegetative establishment. As was mentioned, you know, our really, our number one goal on these is to minimize and manage stormwater during construction. And Nexamp works with a handful of very experienced contractors who are able to, you know, they've worked on many large sites like this. They're able to effectively manage and control runoff. They build the BMPs first. They'll come in, they'll clear the trees and then they will grade the site out and then they'll essentially get these BMPs established so that we're directing runoff from construction period into our basins where it can be appropriately mitigated and allowing sediment to dissipate before leaving the site. And again, that's our number one goal is...
What do you do with your stumps? Do you grind them also? But you don't remove them?
Yeah. So I believe they grind out the stumps and essentially they, you know, kind of, they have to essentially regrade the site to get it smooth enough and that's some of this grading that you see underneath the panels here. So we show proposed grading under the panels in areas that are in excess of 20% slope because there's certain tolerances that these racking systems can deal with in order to be constructed. So we show the grading only to the extent necessary in order to be able to construct the racking for the solar arrays. And I think, yep.
I have a question on that too because some of these drawings we're flipping around here and should show a considerable difference in elevation, right? Looking at the top of?
Correct, correct.
So how do you actually, you got panels that are mounted on racks. How do you actually construct that when you've got that much of a grade change? Do you have to level everything off to a certain...
Nope. Nope. These, again, I can't speak to the exact type of racking system that will be used, but a lot of times they'll use a racking system that basically is, it can go with the topography of the land and there's certain tolerances that it can exceed and that's the 20% threshold that we design to when we grade out those areas. And then we have, we had a geotechnical company do soil borings and test pits throughout the site and they design the, or pick the appropriate racking system for the soil conditions on the site. Again, I would imagine a site like this, again, I can't say that, but I would imagine it would probably be a ground screw type system where they have a hollow stem auger ground screw that gets driven into the ground and then based upon that, they have, the racking system gets built where they kind of telescope the holes down into those hollow stem augers that they put into the ground and it's pretty flexible and they're able to kind of adjust it and make it work with the land. And the idea is when they build this, they want to make sure that this is the southerly direction, so our panels are aligned to east-west. They want to make sure that that leading edge, which is the lower edge of the panel, is a kind of a relatively smooth line and they're able to, you know, accomplish quite a lot with these racking systems in order to be able to work with the land. So that's how we are able to accomplish that. Given the grade change, you can still do these solar arrays on these sites with quite a bit of topography. So it's...
What, based on elevations, what percentage, you talked about the retention basin of this land area of the entire site, actually, I know there's pervious of it, of it, is runoff, but how much of it ends up? What percentage of the land goes into that one retention pond?
So if you were to look in our stormwater management report, we've done hydrologic calculations which compare the pre and post-development condition. So we've designed these basins to capture as much of this area that we possibly can.
And based on what kind of rainstorm, like what, if we get two inches rain in a 24-hour period, are we okay or is there...
Yep. So we design everything for the standard for Mass DEP, which is the 210 and 100-year design storms. So if you were to look at, show you this figure here, it's figure two, which is in the post-development hydrology calculations, which I believe is appendix C of your stormwater report. You can see that we draw a hydrology drainage map and what we do is we look at what's the drainage subcatchment tributary to our proposed basin. So for example, PDA 1C is the subcatchment that's tributary to infiltration basin one and it primarily follows this hillside here and it kind of comes up to a point at the top of the hill here. So we size the basins to be able to handle the flows for the 210 and 100-year storm events and we design the outlets as, we have a large concrete outlet control structure with a pipe that discharges here with a riprap apron. And we also have an emergency spillway, which based upon our calculations would only come into effect if the, there were to be some sort of a failure with the outlet control structure. So that is a concrete, you know, five-by-five outside structure and we've got a 12-inch HDPE pipe leaving that. And we design these outlet control structures with multi-stage orifices that are able to throttle the outflows for the very storm event. So in your lower-flow storms, you're only letting out a smaller amount and then obviously once you get a lot more into the basin, you have to start letting it out a little bit faster and then we make sure that we design it with at least one foot of freeboard, which means that the maximum ponding within this basin is one foot below the top of berm elevation. So we design that factor safety in when we do our stormwater calculations. So we have factored in the, we understand that there is, you know, a fair bit of, a significant amount of tree clearing associated with this project. However, we've designed these fairly large infiltration basins to capture and attenuate those flows before, you know, discharging them. And again, we've tried to situate them in areas that are consistent with natural flow paths.
Would you prefer Conservation?
We have filed the notice of intent. We've submitted it and we will be discussing the project with Conservation at their January meeting.
So a couple of things. Phil, do you ever observe those test pits for stormwater?
I always observe test pits.
So you saw these?
No, I have not. Whenever they incorporate the infiltration rates as part of their design, I will need to observe the test pits.
Okay.
In the event that they do not do that, then we presume it's a zero credit for infiltration.
Okay. I was wondering, and then the maintenance for the basins?
Yep.
Who's responsible? The site owner is going to be responsible?
That's correct.
But how do we make sure that they do it?
So we have in here, we have a site owner's manual which outlines those operation and maintenance procedures and Nexamp has a program in place that you'll see in the application. They have a company that, or they basically, they do their own maintenance on the solar arrays and part of that is monitoring for erosion, maintaining any stormwater BMPs that are on the site.
Okay. So the owner will eventually be Nexamp?
For the...
Is that what you're going to say?
For the site owner?
The responsibility lies with the site owner?
They'll be the responsible party for the period of the lease, which I think is typically 20 years, I want to say, Julie, right?
That's correct.
Typical 20-year lease period. So they'll be responsible for coming in, doing maintenance. They'll be monitoring the performance of the array, maintenance of any electrical equipment as needed, as well as monitoring the site for signs of erosion and making sure that the stormwater BMPs are functioning appropriately. And that's all part of their standard operation and maintenance procedures for these solar facilities. And I just wanted to jump back, Bill, to the test pits. So we did do three test pits in each of these stormwater basins that we've provided the test pit logs in our appendix A of the stormwater report. Again, we, the in situ soils are mostly hydrologic soil class B and mostly it's, I believe, Canton fine sandy loam is the mapping and we found consistent results with that. It's generally, you know, once you get below the first two and a half feet of top and subsoil, it's generally relatively sandy gravelly material. So we believe, you know, it's certainly conducive to infiltration. We did not take any credit in the stormwater modeling for infiltration and that was just basically because...
So then that's great. It's consistent with what I said.
Exactly. We didn't take any credit for it. We basically made sure that these things were going to function without any sort, you know, just...
Right.
And the reasoning, you know, why, yeah, so that was basically how we approached that.
While we're talking about stormwater, and I do owe you a comment letter and it's forthcoming. The only part of the area that I'm really concerned about is surprisingly not the area where the panels are. It's the first several hundred feet of driveway and there's no mitigation for stormwater BMPs on that first section of roadway.
Sure.
It appears that the flow from the site in general contributes to two stream watersheds that are fairly significant and I doubt anybody's going to notice any significant impact as a result of this project. Now that being said, it becomes an issue for the Conservation Commission on that first couple of hundred feet with regard to erosion control and making sure that we're pre-treating the discharges, TSS removal basically.
Yeah. Just as a side note, you have a 15-foot no build. That's not accurate. So I would get with Steve before our meeting. So I, myself and Mike are both on the CONCOM. So you have, I don't know, it's 50. It's not 15.
Okay.
I don't know where you got the 15.
Well, we have a 50-foot and a 100.
Yeah. So that's, that doesn't exist. The 15 no build is not, we don't have that.
Along where the road starts, Tracy's, that we were saying.
Um, just he's got like a buffer on multiple plans that limit of building. That's not accurate.
Okay.
So I would just get with Steve to touch base with him for his comments before he comes in front of us.
Before you go in front of CONCOM, a 15-foot road all the way in like that isn't going to cut it. I know they've got a bridge there. Couldn't something be done to that?
And I didn't see that you're stockpiling or it either. You have a detail, but you don't have the, unless you can point it out to me.
Soil stockpiling?
Yeah. For the wetland replication materials.
Um...
Just a side note.
Sure.
And what were you saying about the road for a 15?
It's only 15 feet.
For emergency vehicles.
They need to make it wider, but you have to get one inch across.
He's running, yeah, he's running along the, um...
I know.
The property line.
Again, we've designed these projects with 15-foot access roads and we've never had any issues with access.
Just hold on. Something happens in the middle of that road, nothing getting around it. So guess what? It's going to be more than 15 feet. I'll tell you that right now. Period. You get a truck that dies or whatever in the middle of that road, how are you getting around it?
Emergency access. Fire truck has to come in.
How are you going to get around it?
They're going to drive into the wetlands.
Right. I mean, we're pretty limited in what we can do.
Well, that's why we're bringing it up now because I said they're on CONCOM. So it's something to...
Would it be something that you would consider to have a wider section of road, cross-section in other areas, but neck down at those?
Yes, right. I have no problem with that at the bridge crossing.
Threading a needle here.
But...
They've got to work within what...
CONCOM allows, but still, way you can widen.
This area of the site in here is actually the one part of the site that is not wooded and there's a little bit of an open field. We might be able to put in some sort of a little like pull-off. We might be able to incorporate some little pull-offs at certain points so that people can kind of pull off to the side and allow other vehicles to pass. Is that something that you might be looking for? We could probably put one right in.
I think the concern is an emergency rescue situation. Somebody's up there, there's a fire and then there's a tree across the road. They want to have ample room to travel and navigate around an obstruction.
Or two vehicles. Two vehicles that pass each other, no problem.
It's all been flagged by wetlands engineer already?
Yes. Yep. Everything's been delineated along...
So I understand they're now crossing where you'd need to cross with the bridge. I understand that. But the area is on this side of it.
In here.
So you widen that all up. Coming out on the West Street, wherever you can, you widen it out, widen up that area.
So maybe something in here a little bit?
Possibly, yeah.
And then maybe something in this section in here?
We've got a 20-foot gate now.
Yeah. You're going to have to widen that up.
And we can go with a 24-foot gate. It might be a little bit wider.
But it's, you know, it's a really long road. It isn't just like the other project that, you know, we looked at, it's just, what is it, 100 feet long? You know, you're, how long is your road that goes all the way in to that point?
I would guess that, yeah, this is probably 900 feet, 1,000.
It's over subdivision.
So, yeah, that's something we can, we can look at is trying to make it a little bit wider in areas where we're kind of...
But you've got to work with CONCOM too.
With CONCOM.
Even with CONCOM on the entrance, I mean, you're, you're 15 feet.
Again, we're pinched here, we're pinched here and we're pinched here and then maybe this area, I think we have opportunity to allow for a little bit of widening so we can have vehicles passing each other.
They're not doing any replication on the front. So they're just skimming. This is, so they're not proposing any replicating, which that's a little questionable. Try not, not including any of that.
Well, we're outside of the, we're not impacting any wetlands here. We're very tight to it, but we're not actually...
So you're not doing any grading and you're not going to be any...
50 feet?
There's going to be grading between here and the property line. It's a very tight...
I'm talking about resource area, Phil.
Is there a live water source there? Is there a brook or a stream there as well?
Oh, yes.
So that's, isn't that two hundred feet? That's the-
Well, it has to be perennial. I don't know if it's a perennial.
River front area.
River's front, right.
River front area.
It's a spring-fed, constant, almost constant.
Right, which drains out this direction.
I think we're getting off topic.
Yeah.
But we need, let's, just, we need to widen that road.
Yeah.
For sure. You need to talk to Steve.
Get a slow-mo with it if you can.
Yeah, please.
Are we allowed to ask a few questions?
Not yet.
Just let us know.
Also up on your paw number two?
Yes.
You said it's not shown. You're gonna do one here. Turn it up there?
Sorry, what?
Turn it up on paw number two?
Oh, yeah. Well, it's not a cul-de-sac, but it's a regular kind of hammerhead turnaround here.
Make it a little bit of, almost like a cul-de-sac turnaround.
With a firetruck stuck in there or something.
I mean, we can widen, we can certainly widen it out a little bit.
Yep, there you go.
So.
Just look at my graph.
Right there. Say, just put a circle there. That'd be awesome.
Well, but firetruck.
And-
And on your twelve feet going around, I think should be fifteen. Twelve's tight.
We have an issue with the grass too, right?
Nope.
No?
Well, they're gonna show a detail that I need to look at. I would encourage you to consider just a gravel driveway and not loamed and seeded.
Right.
I don't see the actual advantage of doing it that way. It's overall a minor, it may not, actually, it may, probably wouldn't even be an increase in your-
That's my concern, is that it's gonna affect our stormwater design if we have that kind of bad-
Gravel water goes through gravel.
And so, so-
Until it gets compacted.
You're gonna take a look at that and you'll think about it.
Yeah.
The other comment I was gonna have was regarding the Mobile Oil Pipeline. I'm wondering if there's any special, and again, this is beyond the board's purview, but usually they have special permitting requirements if you're crossing their pipeline?
I think it's a deadline. It's not functioning anymore.
That might be, but they still have, they still have-
As long as they still have an easement.
Yeah.
I don't know if they've given-
They have to sign off on it.
I don't-
They have to sign it. We did a show on-
Where's the easement?
I don't know if they've given up the easement.
It's after the, it's after the wetland halfway up the hill before the array.
I gotta check on that too.
Yeah, as far as the crossing, it just needs to be plated and stuff. They'll tell you though.
Right.
Is there a purpose for the twenty-foot wide access gate on three oh two?
Uh, the one down at the bottom of the hill here, or this one?
The three oh two, yeah.
So the one at here or the one further to the west?
Or either one on the, on the outside there.
These ones are just other ways that you could get, if you had to address some sort of a maintenance issue outside the fence, you know, that way you could get out at that location. And similarly, we-
What's happening outside the fence?
The property lines are not here.
Oh, okay.
So, yeah, we have that, that zone between the fence and the property line where we have kind of that, you know, it's gonna be essentially just, you know-
Tree cutting and-
Tree cutting area.
Okay.
And again, we have another gate down here, which is more to facilitate basin maintenance. If they need to get out here, maintain the swell at all, we wanted to provide a few means of access to try to get, you know, other parts that we can make sure the project's accessible for maintenance.
How large is the site?
The site's sixty-one acres, but my question was gonna be the area of disturbance, not the, not the array.
The area of disturbance is approximately forty-eight acres.
Two acres under MIBA.
Wow.
Okay. And the solar array covers, what'd you say, twenty-four acres?
The panel area themselves is around, around twenty-three and the fenced area is around thirty-one.
And how many megawatts you have?
Six point five megawatt DC.
How many panels roughly, up until?
Uh, Julie, can I answer that?
Roughly eighteen thousand panels.
Okay, thank you.
Your basis compared with the other one?
Double farms around town.
Well, I think the panel area is the, consistent with what the last one was. But the area of disturbance is larger.
Yeah, six point five versus ten.
One question on your battery backup or battery storage.
Yes.
Carbon batteries. Lithium or liquid?
Okay.
Can I answer that?
So lithium ion cell inside.
Liquid cells?
Um.
Dry cell?
Dry.
It's all dry. Okay. Has its own pressure?
Yes.
Everything?
Yep. It's got multiple layers of sensors and it's got the clean gas emission.
So there'd be no liquid of any type in there whatsoever?
No.
And on your AC/DC inverters and all that, oil pool, air cool, fan cool?
Fan cool.
All fan cool, no water?
Right.
That is a nice little cut shade there. We could keep putting on.
Yeah, I wanna, I wanna point out and be consistent with what we asked at the last meeting. So if you were here, you saw some of those comments. Concerns about the number of employees, the activity at the site, the traffic generation, the signage that might be warranted as a result of that, emergency response plans.
Yep.
Can you forward the list?
I'll forward the list to you and-
I was taking notes on some of the other things that came up and I anticipated similar comments.
And the other reason, even, even during construction, I mean, sat thinking about a fifteen-foot wide road, what are you gonna do? Stack trucks out in the street while they're trying to go one way and a guy come out and a guy go in? And, I mean-
Sure.
You're gonna widen it up.
Logistics, you know, we get, yeah, we can provide some bump outs to provide, you know, for passage of, you know, vehicles and things.
Even right on the main, main street, if you can, see what, how it goes with COMCOM.
Yep.
See if they can work with you.
Yep.
Where it's a safety issue, not so much as a, you know, just for the site, but as a safety issue.
Right.
To allow two vehicles at a side by side.
Mm-hmm.
You know, so.
I'm a little concerned about the proximity of the main access road to the property boundary to the east.
Yep.
So I know Ian stamped these plans, but I see plastered all over these plans for permitting only. Jeff has assured me he's gonna remove any references to this being a permit set of drawings. And-
Right.
And-
Wait out.
And these are not conceptual drawings. These are actual drawings that we're looking at and we're going to be approving. So, so I wanna make sure that-
Yeah.
That this is true and accurate and, and you should probably make some effort to demarcate that property line primarily because of your proximity to the work that's associated there.
Mm-hmm.
Sure.
And that's why like house locations and stuff, in case we need to have a, like a natural buffer or something like that to go on or-
Show driveways off that street where they are, relative-
I can show you, yeah. I can roughly trace in those driveway locations.
And everything, yeah.
From an aerial image, I can kind of approximate where those are. And I can provide approximate house locations in the vicinity of the project as well and-
At least get it on GIS or whatever.
Like for the neighbors, like you brought up in the last one, to know where the neighbors are.
Well, yeah. It's part of the whole.
Yeah. And what's on the backside of this? Nothing?
Nothing.
It's all, it's all woods.
It's all woods.
Yeah, they all drain to these existing streams, so I don't think you're gonna see any measurable impact as a result of this project to those streams. In fact, it might help our discharge permit for the wastewater treatment plan ultimately.
Yeah, right.
But-
I don't see much impact.
No. It won't be significant. Everything's draining to these existing resource areas which have, you know, active, well-flowing streams. So it becomes a question of cleaning it up before you discharge.
Yep.
Understood. Yep.
What, you always bring up what? Are you afraid of building it?
Maybe.
Maybe.
I don't see a story of that. I mean, it's the same as the other one.
Yeah.
Any other questions or comments, Bill?
Signage in the street.
No. Again, I apologize. I do owe you a letter and I plan on getting that to you as soon as I can.
Okay.
He's gonna, he's gonna forward them the list at the other-
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, we'll check in with signage and stuff like that. We can, you'll know all that.
Certainly, yeah. I do remember you guys talking about some of the signage and in terms of the, you know, what's gonna go on the fence. You know, we did provide a detail in terms of, you know, there's gonna be an emergency contact sign on the gate. And we have a little detail here saying, you know, sign that's on the gate. You know, we had put a note here that the gate should be equipped with a Knox box per request of the fire department. We have these little danger high voltage signs that are gonna be placed on the chain link fence here. We have a little detail.
Especially during construction though.
We're talking signage out on the street.
Oh, out on the street.
Truck centering and-
So temporary signage along the street.
Trucks turning, you know, all this.
Trucks entering and stuff like that. Just so people driving down the street know.
It's a very busy road.
Yep.
Especially if you're doing anything in the summertime. It's extremely-
Mm-hmm.
They're going up the lakes.
Water slide up there and all that, so.
Yep.
And there's some sharp corners on it. Where exactly is your?
I know where it was.
Is it right by Conservation Drive?
Yeah.
So that's a bad corner right there.
Right. I think that's about up here, that little bend in the street. I mean, at least this is on a kind of a straightaway right here, but there is that corner a couple hundred feet down there.
If you're getting trucks stuck, you might even have to have a flag person up there or somebody else.
Right. Right, 'cause, yeah, they come in and bring some deliveries and-
The same thing that was said about your, during construction meetings, to make sure that the trucks aren't jake breaking and they're watching for kids and the neighbors. And, I mean, they have to be extremely careful. And it has to be conveyed, not just between us. It has to be conveyed.
So as I said at the last meeting, after I issued my letter, we'll expect written responses back.
Absolutely. Yep.
Boyd, anything else for now?
Neighbors.
Okay, this is a public hearing. We'll take some questions from the audience. If there's anybody that has any questions or comments. I'll recognize you. You can give your name and your address and then you can ask your question or-
I'm the closest one, I guess.
You got something, John?
Yeah, I had a question.
Go ahead.
Over two oh two Mega Street. And I'm required to have an apron on development I'm putting in, a tar apron. Is this required?
Oh, yeah. Yeah, he'll be an apron.
Can you read what the detail says?
Yeah, so, so we have a proposed stabilized construction entrance, which, you know, typically consists of large, larger diameter crushed stone. And we have a detail that's, you know, that's basically so that the mud on the truck tires, you know, will basically be, you know-
Dropping.
Drop off on the, in the stone. And then we've got a note here, you know, contractors shall sweep the street daily, make sure that they're not tracking sediment out into the street. Certainly, we have this area to protect here as well, so we have, have that on the plans.
Now, with the wetlands being there-
Yeah, go ahead, Bill. Let me just follow up on that. The other thing with regard to this site, the slope from the road is into the site and not toward the road.
Right.
That's, that's the difference.
Yes, it does kind of, you know, go down, drop off a little bit and then it, you know-
And then down.
And then back down again and then up.
Now, like on the last one, we had a forty-foot paved strip, but there was no wetlands there.
Yeah.
The wetlands are here. The stone, I think, would be adequate.
Yeah.
Especially since the slope did not out.
Plus going down.
Yep.
Okay. Sir, name and address?
Steve Bloom, one sixty-four West Street, AKA the guy in the middle of this.
Yeah.
Can I see? Which one?
Right there.
Okay.
Well, I'll start at the road and look my way back. Just east of your driveway is my big old barn that's falling down. It used to be Freddy Crockett's barn, if you remember.
Yep, Crockett's barn.
There's a spring under the barn. It discharges a brook. I see no provision on the plan for a culvert or anything else to handle the runoff from the area. Don't really want the barn underwater.
So, so that's another reason to show the buildings on the adjacent, so we know the location of where they're at.
Right. It's pretty close to the street on here, right?
Is there any evidence suggesting that there is a spring discharging that way?
Our wetland scientist delineated this area. Presumably, they, again, I can speak to him and see what he may or may not have observed in this area, but, you know, this is the limit of where he demarcated the wet-
But that needs to be reviewed also.
It's very, very tight over there. It's probably less than fifty feet from the side of the barn over to the property line. And water runs through there seven, eight, nine months of the year.
Surface?
Surface. There is a little bit of a, you know, they dredged it out a little bit from the barn running over towards that property. And it's, it's usually always wet. So again, concerns flooding. While we're at that area, your first gate is going to be a thousand thirteen hundred feet off the road. You're opening it up to traffic. We've gotta put a gate at the road, something.
Stop people from going in there.
Yeah, every hillbilly with a pickup, that's gonna be in there.
Oh, absolutely, yeah.
No, and I-
No, if you're a hillbilly with a pickup, I apologize.
I know what you're saying. Come in, come in, say twenty feet or something.
Right.
Off the road.
Yeah, you gotta put something in there because-
I agree with that.
Anytime you put in a new stretch of gravel, everybody's gonna turn in there and-
They wanna look around.
And that's within-
Maybe something similar to, you know, like a pipe, you know, let's say, a state park, a swing gate. Pipe, swing gate or something.
Yeah, keep the vehicles out.
Just to keep, you know, people we don't want going in there.
Yeah, so they will go in there.
And put that on a box too for the plant department.
Okay.
Yep.
Okay.
I'm going to assume that the gravel driveway is going to be plowed during the course of the winter, so that if there is an emergency access is going to be easy. I can anticipate that if something's going on thirteen, fourteen hundred feet up in the woods, that you're just gonna have to plow through four feet of snow to get to it. Is that accurate or am I-
It's supposed to be kept open, isn't it?
Yeah, of course.
I don't know. Let's let them answer.
I mean, I can't necessarily speak to the, my understanding was that these were only done on an as-needed basis. I mean, if there's no need for them to go out to the site and get in there, then they're not gonna just go in and plow it.
Get a firetruck back there. If it's not, I'm just asking if emergency access, police, whatever.
They're gonna have to plow it.
You're gonna have to plow. You know about that, right?
Yeah.
I'm kinda looking at it backwards in that I'm trying to determine how many times I'm going to be inconvenienced by having somebody drive through there in the middle of the night at four in the morning, plowing the road or messing with it where it's, you know, seventy-five feet from my house. You know, I would assume that, well, I don't know. I don't run a power plant, but I would assume you have to be able to get back there if something's going on, there's gonna be maintenance going on, somebody's going to plow it, somebody's gonna maintain it.
I mean, if they were to say we're gonna put forty houses out there, there'd be somebody out there plowing it then too.
Oh, yeah, I agree with you.
I mean, if they're gonna put a road out there, something's gonna get plowed if they have to get plowed, you know. I don't see, you know, you mean, it's not gonna be a plow going up every day.
They may not have to do it at three in the morning. But they may not have to do it at three in the morning.
If it has to be plowed out, it has to be plowed out.
No, I agree.
Yeah.
I just didn't know what the standard procedure was, whether it's left, you know, dormant once you shut the gate, it's done, nobody goes in there, but once you monitor things, or if this is something that's gonna have, you know, maintenance people in and out of there all the time, et cetera, et cetera.
There is a snow management provision in the site owner's manual.
Yeah.
And shall comply with the following requirements. I think where they were going with the grass is that they weren't gonna be plowing the grass.
Right, you wouldn't be.
So the grassed area.
Oh, the areas around the outside here?
Yeah, yeah.
I mean, again, the main point or points of maintenance are the equipment pads, which are along the gravel road, I mean, there would realistically be a very slim chance that you would ever need to get to those peripheral areas, unless there was some.
But if there's a calamity, it's gonna be to the inverters or something like that.
I would think that any sort of, you know, typical maintenance will be involved on those equipment pads, which are directly accessible from the gravel road, not.
Yeah, I think we're looking at it from an emergency perspective and not a ma- you would look at it as a maintenance perspective, we're looking at it as an emergency.
We drive by the one in Bangles Farm in Oxbridge all the time and there's guys in there almost constantly. There's always a pickup truck parked in there and somebody's messing around with something in there, so I, maybe that's a rare case, but it seems like this isn't just something that they put it up and then they shut the gate and forget about it for twenty-five years. Somebody's gonna be in there messing around.
I would imagine the.
Yeah, they plow into the one in Bangles all the time, there's always trucks in there.
Okay.
So.
Yeah, there'll be maintenance, grass cutting and stuff like that, there will be people in there.
Well, that's reasonable, I understand that.
Yeah.
What is the duration of the project from start to finish, how long does it take to do this?
Um, I mean, in terms of a general construction timeline, I would anticipate like four to six months in terms of substantial completion of site work and things and, you know, the arrays,
they can be built at, I guess, at a variable pace depending on how quickly they need to install them, but things go in relatively quickly and, you know, I would think a project of this scale would probably be done within six months generally.
I can speak to that a little more, so depending, it all depends on weather conditions. As soon as we start this project, it's not gonna be sitting out there with equipment for months at a time. Once we start, that means we have our construction financing, so we're gonna build that system as quickly as possible. It could be as little as four months or as much as six months if there was a lot of snow or some other weather condition.
All right, so based on the grades that you're dealing with up there, it sounds like you're gonna be bringing material in, bringing material out, logging trucks, this, that, and the other thing, it's, that road is gonna get a lot of use. Do we have any provisions for some sort of, you know, keep the dust down type of a thing, I'm understanding it's just gonna be a gravel road, it sounds like it's gonna be a freeway for a while.
Yep, yep, and that's something that, we are, I forgot to mention this during my presentation, but because this project, you know, disturbs more than one acre, we're required to do a stormwater pollution prevention plan, and that's something that we file, you know, with the EPA, and Next amp has a construction management team that's on the site at all times, keeping an eye on the site where contractor, making sure that they're doing erosion control inspections and such. And the provisions of that SWIP document, which is in our stormwater report, include dust control, so those are things that they're gonna have to do, they're gonna have to monitor the erosion controls, maintain them, make sure that there's no sediment leaving the site, monitor for dusts and things of that nature to make sure that construction proceeds smoothly and that they're not having any negative impacts.
I mean, you're not doing any gravel removal or anything like that?
Nope, the intent was to balance the earthwork to that maximum extent that we can on the site. Again, you know, any material that they have to excavate out to build the, you know, that road, we're gonna plan to kind of respread that in areas, you know, there's gonna be plenty of opportunities to kind of fill in these natural valleys here. Essentially, they're gonna be kind of smoothing the whole site out, you know, we will have some imported materials for the road most likely and as well some minimal structural fill and concrete for these ancillary equipment areas. So there will be, you know, some truck traffic associated with that, the idea is to minimize the overall site work, so that's what we've designed it to do that, so.
I would ask the board to consider the fact that the forty acres that I own in the middle of that is not just woods, we've, it's going to be developed at some point, it's my retirement, that's the plan. We'd like to put some houses up there, we'd like to sell it to somebody, so I'd like that to be considered. I can't sell a lot with a bunch of solar panels next to it, at least it makes it difficult. So whatever can be done to lessen the impact on my property and at least try to retain some of my value would be helpful. Certainly don't wanna think I've been paying all these taxes for all these years and then in the end I've done nothing.
What is the buffer zone between this property and where your construction is?
Yeah, the limit of clearing as currently shown along this property line is essentially up to the property line. And the fence is about fifteen feet off of that. And the panel is set back a bit more, about forty.
We're not putting in a golf course.
I have a question for the building inspector, I don't know how to answer that. Actually, let me back that up, conversations with town council previously, solar panels enjoy designation under what's called the Dover Amendment.
Yes.
Mass General law, chapter forty-eight, section three. And as such, they don't necessarily have to comply with all aspects of zoning, and that would include building setbacks, so.
Does that property get zoned differently now, is it still RA or is it gonna be an industrial, commercial?
State runs it.
It's still residential.
Still residential, okay. Yeah, that's pretty much all I've got, I mean, you know, obviously we've got concerns and we'll come up with more questions as we go.
Yeah, but we'll be continuing the public hearing tonight, so you have plenty of opportunity to come in and get.
Like I said, I wanna delve into all the nitty-gritty little things of it, it's just the highlights that I figure, you know, a little common sense. They've got a two-hundred-foot right away coming off of West Street coming in, I understand it's wet in the middle, but they're hugging my line all the way down the side. There's no room, they're right on the line. So, I mean, I tell you to put in our abilities for the deer to eat them, I tell you to set the driveway back a little bit, you know.
What about a decorative fence? You guys could probably get together to determine.
Yeah, I mean, the other thing is too, is that all the electrical utilities are gonna be underground up where the site is, but going all the way from West Street in, it's gonna be telephone poles. So, we're gonna be looking out our front window at a bunch of telephone poles, I know there's nothing that really can be done about that, they probably don't wanna hear about putting in underground electricity all the way back, because that's ridiculous as far as expense. Like I said, I'm just trying to limit my visual impact as much as possible.
What's proposed there for a fence among the property line?
Nothing.
Just regular actual.
So the other thing is in your manual, you say that the site is contained with a security fence.
Yep.
You don't consider the driveway as the site also?
I mean, the main area that they're trying to protect is the panels.
Right.
That's where the valuable equipment is, is within the panel area, I mean, sure, this overhead wires and things is, I guess, you know, it's infrastructure, but I don't see that that's, you know, something that's would be, there'd be no point in really fencing it at all, it's just like, you know, essentially like you'd have a long west.
Well, that, it just says in the manual.
I'm not necessarily pushing for a fence on the property line, I don't really care about that, as long as we have a gate at the road and we don't have people coming in and out of there.
Yeah, back, yeah.
Right, right next to the light shining on my window.
I'm more concerned that it's well-defined as part of the project so that you don't have trespass onto the neighbor's property.
Right.
Whether it's with construction or even personnel, you know.
Because we're also a little bit vulnerable on the backside of the property where the oil pipeline goes through, people go through the oil pipeline and your gate is behind that, so anybody tracking down the oil pipeline is going to find this nice gravel road and they're gonna end up in my driveway, you know, in my side yard.
Yeah.
A lot of four-wheelers up there.
A lot of four-wheelers, a lot of horseback, you know, I've spent eighteen years throwing people out of those woods, so. You know, we just wanna limit, I don't anticipate that you're gonna do anything on either side of the pipeline where your driveway crosses it.
Right, I think that would, might make access emergency almost more difficult if we start putting in multiple gates, you know, along that road, I would think that that might complicate that.
Well, is the, I don't know if the pipeline's terminated, I just heard that here, is that factual?
Well, my understanding is there's an opportunity, if the market's correct, that someone may step in that role.
It is no longer running.
It's no longer on.
It's no longer running.
But I think they need to check that out.
Right, because I, you know, obviously owning the property twenty years ago, they went through and they clear cut it and all the brush was taken out and it was maintained.
Right.
Now, when I go up in the woods, it's.
Grown up.
It's grown up, so the.
They sold, they sold, the building's everything already been sold, the pipeline isn't running right now.
So the pipeline's dormant, so, all right, we still can't build on it.
No, not yet, I'm gonna find out.
Not yet, they may release the easements back to the property owners, but that's just another rule.
That's another hurdle, okay, all right, okay, I just wanted to cover it. Yeah, like I said, as long as it doesn't adversely affect my property value significantly, I mean, I understand it will, and there's only so much we can do about that.
So much, yeah, right.
If we can just keep that in mind.
Yep, we will for sure.
I have.
Like I said, the public hearing will be continued, so if you have any other questions, come into the next meeting and we'll certainly try to address them.
Okay.
I have a quick question.
Mike?
On logging it, obviously if you're changing grades, then that means you're stumping.
True, within the, within the limits of the, really primarily the fence area.
Are you gonna be grinding or are you gonna be removing stumps? You're changing grade, that means then you're gonna be removing stumps?
Certainly within here, where they're changing grades, yeah.
Okay, so we'd like to know that. Now, when you're logging it, are you gonna be logging and hauling logs out, or are you gonna be chipping and grinding everything on site and spreading it?
I believe they usually chip, if I'm not mistaken.
So that whole area you're gonna chip, that whole?
Thirty-inch tree.
That whole area you're chipping?
It's a combination of both, so we'll take some logs out and we'll.
You will, can we get a general idea then on what you're logging out?
Yes, I can ask the site construction manager.
You know, how many, I mean, you could be out of that lot, I mean, dozens of tractor trailer loads of logs, that's on this, how many, how many loads you're hauling out of the site? And are you bringing in a, if you're doing stumps, then that means you're bringing in a big stump grinder, tub grinder, you do it all right there on site?
Yes.
So, that's where I'm getting at, on the small road, I mean, you've seen them, right, tub grinders, you're not bringing it up a fifteen-foot road, that's for sure, they're huge, so, so I mean, you can make sure.
Couple of quick questions if I may, I'm the mother and daughter, I'm Steve Bloom's neighbor, Debbie Barry-Bertham, we're directly across the street from the old Crockett barn, my driver will be facing that driveway, we're gonna be mirror imaging each other.
Can you go back to the sheet, show us where their houses?
There was, that's one of my.
Well, he can tell it and give us an idea.
Across from here.
Okay.
I have a couple of quick questions.
Okay, did you give your name and address or?
Deborah Bertham, Barry Bertham, one sixty-three West Street. Actually, out of the old Crockett property we bought across the street.
Try to cross the street from the.
Yeah, I know, but the record would take people's comments and take their name and address.
I'm gonna lead into a few other questions, you said you had presented this before, was there another public hearing that we missed on this?
Nope, nope.
This is the first.
No, I think maybe the Concom, did you go to the Concom?
No, I was saying we're going before the Concom in January meeting, so.
Second question leading into that is, in following the blueprints, why do you not have all the neighbors, everybody delineated on there now, I mean, wouldn't?
That will be one of my comments.
Well, I just find it.
It's a requirement in the site plan review, so they have to do it.
Because I don't wanna sound, you know, like I don't wanna talk about, but I did serve on Concom for eight years.
Okay.
I was back with the Maryland Doobies and the Leon Wazinski's and I did two terms back in the early eighties when we moved to town, had enough, because it's a tough job, you people do, after my two terms I left, so I'm very, very well versed.
There's openings on the Concom.
I'm very well-versed with a lot of what's being presented tonight, I have a lot of concerns. My question is, everybody's voicing the same concern with that little entryway of fifteen feet, can you tell me exactly how far on the left-hand side, before you meet Steve Bloom's delineation, how far are you away from there, let's put this into perspective, how tight you are, how many feet are you away from his property line to the left of that entryway, can you answer that?
In this area right here?
How close are you to his boundary?
It's very tight.
Okay, so I'm leaning up too and on the right, you're almost smack in the water on the other side. So you can talk a very fine story about broadening this for everybody's concern, but do you have any room beyond that fifteen feet? You should have the stats right there, how far are you out on either way that you can go wider, right through all that wetland, do you have the answer to that question?
We're not proposing to go into this wetland at all.
Well, you're, you're right, you're right there, you're right there.
That's why I kind of brought it up, where they're going for the Concom, so that they bring that all up to make sure.
So I should say those questions then, yes, you're right.
Because, I mean, that's Concom.
You're right.
That's why we brought it up tonight, saying how we wanna see that wider, they're gonna have to figure out how to do it and do it right to get across and know all that, to widen it up.
So I think most of my questions actually probably are not appropriate for tonight, because most of my questions about the retention, the detention ponds.
If they're stormwater related, they are appropriate for.
Stormwater, yes.
Yeah.
It's a very steep elevation.
Yes.
I have great concerns, I mean, you could talk a lovely story about all of the drainage and the this and the that, but if nothing is maintained properly, whatever, you're just talking Dixie. I mean, I've seen hundreds of driveways in Douglas that were supposed to be gravelled that were paved over six months later, when I was on the board and whatever, all this is lovely, but that's a huge elevation up there.
Yep.
And it goes directly, that's a, have you, that's a big.
Have you been up there?
That's a big pond.
I've been up there, I've been on the site.
Big pond, in the front of the old Crockett property. And there's flowing streams right there, everything goes downhill, it's gravity.
I'm aware.
So I have, I have very great concerns about the top of that hill when you're removing thirty, forty acres' worth of.
Yep.
Yep.
Erosion control measures downhill all the way.
And that's why we've done a very robust stormwater design, we've provided plenty of swales to capture and intercept that flow, again, with the leftover tree.
But you didn't know about the spring, there is.
Stump grindings, we're going to, you know, we have experienced site work contractors who do projects on this scale before and they, you know, they are able to use the wood chips and things to try to minimize and, you know, intercept the flows to control runoff, again, they build the stormwater BMPs first and foremost to be able to get ahead of that and manage the flows, it is a big concern and we are going to make sure that our contractors and we address those stormwater runoff issues during construction. It's a top priority and it always is on these types of projects and, again, I'm comfortable having worked with Next amp and their contractors on several projects, that they know what they're doing, they've worked on sites like this with, you know, even larger topographic change and they've been able to come up with ways to manage the runoff from those sites.
Ironically, I'm not opposed to the Sola project, so it's a little bit of a, can I ask you, I'm really not opposed to Sola, because it's gotta go somewhere.
It's the lesser of the evils that we've been presenting over the years.
I'm just concerned, this is a huge project, huge that you're proposing, steep elevation and wetlands and stuff all around, if I can't see it and everything's protected, I'm kinda okay with it. But I'm concerned about the sight line, being able to see it, mainly it's gonna impact his property, in my view too, but I'm just more concerned about the sensitive area of that land over there. It's, it's just not a good place to be squeezing that little road in there and going up and doing all that.
I can ask one more question.
I just have one last question.
We've got other items to handle.
Because of that tight curve on West Street.
Yes.
Would you mind doing an Ashtoh site distance, egressing the site?
Can I say one more comment?
What's that?
Can I say one more comment?
Yeah.
Is it a possibility to slide the whole project down off the property line?
Uh, which direction are you suggesting this?
I can't see, uh.
Go back to your other sheet probably, is that what you want, the overall?
West. So, I don't know what, I don't know if it's the topography, why you're hugging, yeah, why you're hugging that, because you just have a lot of land all around it and you're just really, really close to the neighbor's property.
Up by West Street, up there.
This area here?
Move it to the south, move the whole thing south from where it is now.
No, that's north.
The arrows up there.
Yeah, down the.
West.
Right, that's the West Street, away from Steve's land.
Yeah, move it down.
Can I address that please?
One person at a time.
Just because there's a purpose for that, so the most shading on solar projects comes from the south and from the west, so that's why we have it positioned that way.
Talking about the road coming in.
Oh, I'm sorry, I thought you meant for the whole site.
Well, yeah, I mean, the whole project.
That's where you were driving at. She's saying this is why the array layout is where it is, it's because of the shading.
So you're gonna have shading from the trees on both those faces, so that's why it's tucked up.
Positioned here, because this is where you need the most room, is to the south and to the west.
We do talk about late afternoon sun, you're talking to the west side.
Right, correct.
Yeah.
I mean, that's a north-facing slope, which doesn't help them.
No.
Combination of the topography as well.
I would like to hear another excuse why it has to be right on the property line, that roadway.
Well, I mean, it's.
I would think that you'd want to do some sort of expansion, I mean, how many feet are you away from?
Here, we're probably, I guess, probably fifteen feet and then it gets a bit wider here.
Talking about the edge of the, the edge of the driveway's fifteen feet from property.
You've got two hundred.
From here to the property line, we've got greater than that, you know.
And what do you have down further, so?
Down further here.
Yeah, from the inside edge to the property line, the closest distance, is it ten feet, twelve feet, fifteen, what'd you say?
In this strip here?
Yeah.
So down here, it's a little bit less, I would estimate, just looking at it, it's probably more like fifteen feet, because this is fifteen feet wide right here, so this white strip is the strip between the property line and the thing, so we've got at least fifteen feet here, it's probably over twenty feet. Fifteen, yeah, we've got between the road and the property line up here, we've probably got over twenty feet.
But isn't that road fifteen?
The road is fifteen.
It's shaded, and then I see one-third of it, so it's five feet away.
I guess I'm missing what you, what dimension, you're talking about the fence or the property line?
You're saying what's the difference between the gravel drive and the property line?
The property line at the narrowest there.
And that, this between here and here.
Yeah, one of those, rough and tough.
This is like over fifteen feet, because this is fifteen.
So it's as wide as the driveway, fifteen.
More than that, I would say here it's probably about the same, but then up here it gets wider, it gets, the distance is greater from here to here. It's probably twenty plus, twenty plus, I mean, there is a fence here which is set fifteen, fifteen and a half feet off the property line, we have a dimension here, fifteen, that's the fence, but then we've got another roughly, you know, we've got a, the distance here is probably a little over, you know, twenty.
Are you saying the fence is fifteen off the property line?
Fence is fifteen and a half off the property line at a minimum along these two edges here, but then we've got another, this was, and that's to allow for the offgrading for the access.
Then we also require, I mean, the last project had screening, vegetative screening, I know we're not a huge fan, but, I mean, it's just, there's an opportunity, the same owner owns all the way around, there's two hundred ton feet, if you're saying about the shading on the south, I mean, there's flexibility here, I think, to take it right off the property line.
Move it ten, fifteen, twenty feet.
You're not, you're doing a chain link fence and then it's gonna be cleared, right, so you're not doing any vegetative. So you're not doing any vegetative proposal, no fencing, no buffer screening. That's part of our site plan review too, is screening. I, I don't, I mean, I would want to do it most efficiently also. I understand what you're saying, but I, I don't know how much of a, how much of a difference it's going to make on the efficiency. So I have to see why there's a hardship that you can't move it, even though you've got like, I don't know, probably 300 feet from the property line on mostly all of it, and the same owner, common owner that you're dealing with is on the, on the south. So as far as the shading and clearing.
And even moving 15, 20 feet is doubling the distance. You know, anything, 30 feet, whatever, right? I mean, Tracy, is that what you're getting at, is that everything is better?
Well, I mean, keeping a vegetative buffer instead of just having a chain link fence right on the property line, and no screening.
It's responsible, so.
At first, I was thinking you were going to do like expansion or something, like in the future, but.
No, no, this, this area in here is, it would account for the shading. That's why there's this here.
Yeah, but you're right up on the other purse, the butters, right on, up on their property line at the front, and then.
But they don't have to show a hardship because.
Well, they need screening, site plan review.
They need, they need to propose screening.
Screening, yes, but to move the whole project.
To the board's satisfaction, okay, so.
They don't have any room for screening.
Yeah, they're 15 feet between the fence and the property.
There's no proposed screening.
They don't have.
Jeff can take a look at it, and I will also look at the requirements in the zoning bylaws and point that out, the relevant sections regarding screening.
Right, they do have to provide screening, I agree, Tracy.
Now, now, keep in mind.
They don't have to show a hardship.
Keep in mind, those site plan review regs are written as though you're in an industrial or a commercial district. This is a commercial use adjacent to a residential district, so read it, read it to that effect.
Okay, we're gonna move on, because we're getting late.
Oh, you make a motion?
7:15 on January 8.
Will I go back in on the next meeting?
Yeah, January.
That's the day before.
Yeah. You want to be in on our next meeting?
Or the 20 second. Um, yes.
Next meeting.
Next meeting, yes?
Next meeting.
Folks, we'll, we'll, we'll give it, we'll give it time and a date. Hold on one second, and you'll know when the meeting is.
Thank you very much.
I can make a motion to continue the public hearing for Douglas Renewables LLC to January 8, 2019 at 7:15 PM.
So.
Hold on, 7, 7, we got something at 7, right?
Yeah. We have the decision.
We have the other one.
Yeah, we're gonna be able to close that out in 15 minutes?
That's the plan.
For efficient.
I think 15 minutes is nice.
If not, they'll have to come back later.
Conservation, I don't know when.
Okay, who's second it is?
Did you say conservation's the seventh?
Paid by Tracy, seconded by Ken, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those abstain, the motion carries.
7:30.
Thank you very much.
On your 7.
Thank you.
7:30.
You should get a mailing on that.
I just got a thing in the mail today, but it didn't have any dates or times. It just said that it was being discussed.
Oh, yeah, they say contact the office.
Contact the office, right.
Okay, yeah, so it's 7:30 and 7.
Okay.
You're gonna be at my house.
And this is planning.
No, I didn't vote.
Okay, feel it.
I'll come in and sign the accessory.
Well, now, there's other mylaws from the, from the other.
Bella?
Bella?
Bella, yes.
You didn't vote on that one?
Oh, I, um, we didn't do it yet.
We're doing it.
That's exactly what I'm thinking.
Yeah, I can come in.
Well, we've got the mylaws here. Have they taken the mylaws tonight, Bill? Can she come in and sign them tomorrow?
I don't see a problem with doing that, and I know he's hung around all night.
Who'll be mylaws out here?
I don't know.
Oh, yeah.
Two sets.
Which one is that?
That's the residential Concom.
There's no signatures, you don't need me. You don't need my signature?
Do it right now.
How many signatures do we need, Bill?
Uh, you need, did everyone vote on Bella Woods, the residential?
I don't know, is our name there?
Well, I have to look at the decision.
You don't want to sign if not on it, or not sign it.
We're gonna sign them tonight, but I just want to make sure we get all the signatures, so.
That we need, right, yeah.
It's just, it's just the residential Concom.
Residential Concom.
Just the majority of.
Not special permit or anything.
If you need me, I'll come to the floor first.
Okay, this is great.
I won't be there until.
Do you just have one, or do you have two? One's fine, I mean, that's the covenant. Does that also?
No, we're still working.
The Homeowners Association, is that in there? That says, okay, this has to get signed today.
Just let me know when you're gonna come in to sign tomorrow. I won't be back till the half.
Okay.
Bye, guys.
Bye, Trace, thank you.
Thank you.
Merry Christmas, Happy New Year.
There's some problems with your printer here.
My art pen or this regular?
Regular pen.
So this gets signed by you guys.
I agree.
You might want to substitute this page. There's some difficult text to read.
So this is the covenant we're signing right now, Bill, right?
I can see your point, though. I mean, I know it's wet up here. And like she said, a lot of times, those guys, they present the good, you know what I mean? The good picture.
They don't need to sign that, but I would suggest that's gonna get recorded along with this.
Multiple.
But you should substitute those pages that are, the text is not legible.
Bill, there's a, there's a, one of these.
So who's on that? Do we find out who voted on it?
In our sign folder, too. That's the one you just gave me, that's his.
Oh, yeah, but his is signed by him, that, that one is not.
Well, the one in our sign folder is not?
I believe it's not, if you could check.
So we have to sign this one.
His has signatures.
Yeah, it's notarized, that one's notarized.
So what is this versus what this is?
This is the one we have to sign, okay.
You keep one, I take one with me.
Covenant and release of covenant?
It's the same thing, just backwards. Oh, I just see it there. Sorry, Mike kind of took your spot.
It's all right.
Bill, how many would you go to sign of these, these mylaws?
What do you mean?
How many would you want to sign?
You're gonna sign all of them? There's two sets.
Okay, so it's.
Right, there's two sets?
Yeah. Two sets here, right now.
There, one set there, one set there.
We're gonna sign both sets?
Correct. We keep one, they go with.
Do we, what happens if he signed it and he didn't vote on it? Who do we know?
I don't think that's, that's a material. I think everybody's voted on it, if I recall, but I can't.
He's a cat.
Yeah. Signing, you're using stamp, oh, you have to sign.
You have to sign, sorry, Aaron.
No, just.
Like I haven't done this a million times, my drawings.
He handed out two pieces. Only one of those is gonna be signed.
We can start on that one.
We usually get two, but that's fine. We'll take a copy before you leave.
But that other set has to be signed, Mike, as well.
There's a set over here, Mike, if you want to start.
Start.
You need a mylar pen?
Yeah, I did, excuse me.
Well, you can start here.
Yeah, we can sign that with a regular pen.
Did you guys sign the A and R from earlier?
What, you want a regular?
No, that's right there.
No, not yet.
So, do you want to do a copy tonight, or you want me to?
I'm keeping one copy, you're keeping, you're. That, I'm gonna take a copy of before you leave after everybody signs it. You're gonna record it and give us a copy of the recorded version.
Along with.
What happened to the mylar guy? No, the fucking pen disappeared.
You have enough sleeves to load it, Bill, from there?
Does this work?
Got a mylar pen?
No, it's not really.
Tried it, tried it.
It'll work, though.
I haven't tried this one, but.
This is his place, right?
That one no good.
I don't know who that is, I can't.
Not really. I used it, but we need to get a bunch. See, that one's flowing nice.
Try that one.
Make a Christmas donation to get mylar pens.
You gotta increase the budget here a little bit.
The one we have is the envelope factory, it looks like a little. Oh, it's already been constructed.
Does this one work?
We still have a few more things on the agenda before we.
Oh, yeah.
Close the meeting.
I knew it was gonna be a long night.
Too long, yeah.
Because they're gonna do both recreational and with this one. It's a huge business. Five thirty in the morning. You do?
I guess.
Yeah? At least for now.
Here you go, Mr. Collins. Now, you're gonna record this, you're gonna record the Homeowners Maintenance Association, and you're gonna record one set of copies. And you're gonna give us a copy of this and the homeowners. They're gonna give this back to you after you record it with a sticker on it. We just want a copy of the recorded version, okay? And then, when you're ready for construction, give me a call. We'll have a pre-construction meeting, and we'll go through some of the.
You have one?
Protocol for that.
You don't have to sign anything on the maintenance agreement, Bill, right? That's all.
Correct, correct. Town council reviewed that.
Another project, or is it two copies?
Two copies, the same thing, right.
You signed those already?
Yeah.
Can't wait to get home.
Chicken scratch. We're gonna be the, that's our company of the world here.
Yeah, I know, huh? Yeah, they're looking at the capital.
But there's a lot of property that you're taking with you.
I'm just catching up with everybody else.
Right.
Spritz out.
Yeah, we do, but we.
Now, those are sacred.
Those have to get signed, too, there's only two paper copies and one other one.
Is, is that Douglas, that?
Fallsman.
Yeah, that's Douglas, and then.
Goes right up to the line.
And then the one over by you?
By, by the.
1210, 1211, right?
Yeah, by the fight upon.
That's the date.
Another one there.
Yeah.
1211. Wrong one.
The old gravel pit. That was your, your gravel pit over there?
Take her to, Google her.
There's one in there.
Look around. It's like. I gotta sign that? Oh, yeah, that's.
That's a mylar on top?
You want your stamp? Is that paper or stamp?
No, your mylar.
That's, oh, that's mylar.
It's mylar.
Sorry, did those two? This is, oh, that's the one we just did today.
One's underneath that. We'll sit the mylar up to the side.
Yeah, take that. There's a mylar on this one, you can sign that. Oh, you got that? You got your stamp there, Mike?
Yes, sir. Uh, you didn't vote on this one?
The crossing one? How do you know I didn't vote on it? I'm at every meeting. Have I not?
Five.
Well, it doesn't.
You need at least five.
I just signed that.
Three, four, five.
This one abstained from.
Oh, I just signed it.
Hey, Bill.
Hey, Bill, I signed something I abstained on. I can.
Did you sign the mylar on it?
I signed the mylar.
Just put a single line through it.
Right, and all initial.
By this time.
I caught that.
Good for you.
Yeah. Sorry.
Oh, there's only one?
Yeah, one of the nose over there. Ken, you're next?
Yeah.
Should I write abstain next to it, or just?
No, just put your, put a line through, a single line initially.
I did.
That's it. People get the idea.
That almost stands for we'll come in when they bring you more.
So before we start anything, I have to have a pre-construction meeting?
We'll have a pre-construction meeting, we'll go over to the room, make sure everybody understands.
That was what we voted on tonight.
It should be you.
Right, there's only one mylar.
That's right, there's normally only one mylar.
How come there's not, that's gonna be, well.
Because he has a double set, and this here, you need to stand. These are paper.
Happy to do that. It's Lee Lodge, there's only one. This doesn't work.
What are you planning on doing?
Until spring.
It's not me.
There's no limitation on when I have to start this, right? There's no limitation on when I have to start this, right?
Now that the plans are endorsed, you have six months to record them after registry. And I think there're... Technically, I think our subdivision regulations have a time limit of three years for construction. But I'd have to double check that.
Then you can ask for an extension.
Do I got a little time?
You can ask for an extension. You can ask for an extension.
Say after a year, is it something, whatever?
That might be in your covenant too, that limitation. So, those are the two spots that would show up.
You never know, right?
Yeah, I mean, I've seen what all you don't know.
Oh, suddenly I've got a trove of Mylar.
Couldn't find one to, maybe it'll work?
Hold on. This one here is regular. This is, your Mylar is over there.
I signed that.
All right, this is paper. Mylar will...
Don't forget, get us a copy up here for it, okay? You can scan it if you want or drop it off or whatever.
There you go.
Fancy?
Look at that. Simple. There you go. Now I can move back. I got addicted for hours.
What do we got left?
A lot of little stuff.
We haven't been having too much, it happens.
Right. So, like sewer.
It's good.
What are these, paper copies over here?
You have those are paper.
This Alice Chase, that's been kicking around for a long time.
Oh, yeah, we got the new calendar.
Are you guys going to that thing this Thursday night?
Yeah. Yeah.
Have a company get it.
Just the property line.
Oh, you have a company, Dennis. Cause you know, the towns do that thing too. Love the... I'm there a lot. And the trap house, too.
Well, two years ago, we were at the trap house.
They treat, oh, that's a regular place. Usually drop a couple of boxes there. Oh, there's something in there.
Here's the Mylar and the two copies.
Thank you. Should be there more, right?
Yeah.
Whoa, Thursday, right?
It's the appreciation. Yeah, Thursday, two nights.
Right.
Wait a second. Your dinner's Thursday.
Thank you, Ernie.
All right, we all ready folks?
Yes, sir.
Whose pen is this? That's a nice pen.
It's the town's. He said, he said, "Nice pen."
All right, well, we have chapter sixty-one.
All right, let's get back to our agenda.
We're losing members quickly.
Yeah, I know. All right, number one. Chapter sixty-one, section eight, those who intend to sell state of Alice Chase, Orange Street. So, they're selling another piece?
Yes.
And it's just right of first refusal?
Correct.
Do we want it for anything?
No, sir.
No? No? Okay, so...
So, it for us, maybe?
Yeah?
Oh, my God.
So, we need a motion or...
Yeah, yes. I'm like a motion. That the, you recommend that the town refuse to exercise their right of first, whatever it is.
Refusal.
Refusal.
I'll second that.
Motion made by Mike G., seconded by Mike Z., follows in favor.
Aye.
Oppose abstain, motion carries. Okay.
Meeting schedule. Saw that real quick.
Yep, meeting schedule.
Yeah, we got it.
Everybody good with the meeting schedule?
Yep. Make a motion to adapt the twenty nineteen planning board meeting schedule?
Seconded. Motion made by Mike Z., seconded by Mike G., all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Oppose abstain, motion carries. Barry did three. Number four, water sewer line construction inspection survey services subdivision.
Briefly, this is an update. On an unrelated matter, ZBA has jurisdiction over the forty B project, as you may know. They were in the process of doing the water and sewer line constructions and there were a few issues that arose during the installation. We, I've been speaking with Bob Sullivan about this and in that project, and I'm not saying this would apply to all projects, but I certainly endorse this. During the water and sewer line installation, we should have full-time monitoring of the construction standards for those items. It's no different when the town installs water and sewer lines. We have an engineer that's there full-time observing the construction installation. And I view this as no different. When we deal with those utilities and infrastructure, we wanna make sure they're done properly and to specification. So, that's kinda where we're headed. We have two projects that are in the pipeline, Sleepy Hollow and The Lane. That both have water and sewer in the district. This is a new phenomenon, really, over the past twenty years, so it's something we're starting to look at.
And the reason I really agree is cause once it's in, it's buried. You can't see it. It isn't like putting a telephone pole or putting in a driveway or sidewalk.
Right.
Or road. I mean, if a road or whatever is bad, you... I mean, it's not good, but it's on top. Once this is all buried down underneath, man...
You don't see it.
So, on that project, we had a few residents that were impacted and it resulted in them having no water for about a week.
That didn't look too good.
Okay, so, I figured I'd touch on that and let you know where my recommendation is.
Could that be put in a boilerplate? My recommendation, I mean, it can always be asked to have it, say, curtailed or whatever. But if it's in the boilerplate as a standard deal, I mean, obviously, if you're in an area where there's no water sewer, it's omitted. It's not used. But if it's in there, it protects everything going forward. And as the water and sewer expands, it might be, at least it's there. It's like having trees. You can always ask to not, you know, or...
What is the actual issue here?
We don't know...
The woldoom?
We don't know if, we don't know if the lines are being installed correctly or who's installing it.
I know, I know. That's the problem. So, therefore, what?
We shouldn't inspect it.
We wanna have somebody...
Is that the new policies to do?
Well, no, we have undefined policies. I mean, we do construction monitoring inspection generally when it's out in the sticks where we don't have water and sewer. We come out full-time during the paving. We do active testing of the gravel base, the paving. And in my perspective, that's readily observable. As you say, it's not buried, you can see it, you know, it's easily quantifiable and testable after the fact. If you have a suspect area, we've cored asphalt to see what it was made of and make sure it met spec. In this case, these things get buried. Problems may not be readily available till years later.
And you don't know the backfiller?
Or, on the flip side, in this case, a valve should have been installed at a point and it was not a design issue, it was a construction issue. And it was not identified by the contractor because no one was there to tell them, "You need to put a valve here."
They backfill it with stones in it.
Yeah, I mean, you know...
Five years later, the water doesn't...
Yeah, I mean...
So, as a result, we had at least two, maybe three residents that were out of water for a period of time.
I'd like to see it put in the boilerplate. And it's there.
I'm okay either way. I'm okay not having it in the boilerplate and having the board understanding that that's what the protocol is.
Yeah, but the thing is, is right now, we as the board, we know what you're talking about.
I was just gonna say, in the future, you got different people on the board.
And it might not be there and it could be forgotten about.
Okay.
You know, if it's, if it's...
And generally, I work closely with water and sewer and if water sewer wants to be the inspector, I'm happy with that. But the issue up there is they have a staffing issue.
Right, they don't know the power, the manpower do it.
That's right.
So, at the expense of the developer, they hire an engineer to oversee that.
Right.
I got no problem with that. If you wanna boil plate it, that's fine, as long as it's, you know, made now.
Okay.
And that way, they're down the road, hopefully, never have an issue.
So, clearly, on these two projects, the decision's already out the door.
Right, right.
But somebody from water and sewer generally does do inspections, right? But they're not there.
They, that's right, they do a periodic, like Bob was stopping out periodically and observing and everything looked okay and this problem was not caught.
Pine, sand and stone, request for release of bond. I thought we already did that.
Yeah, that one we did. Five is done. I'm not sure why it's on here, unless you wanna vote again.
Nope.
Carry on.
I bought number six.
Number six, the only reason that's on here, you did vote this.
Yeah, I thought so.
But the issue is, they, it was pending an ASBILT. The release was pending the ASBILT. Well, they submitted the ASBILT and it, we found that. They exceeded the permit limits. We allowed on the McIntyre property boundary excavation up to fifty feet from the property line. They went within the fifty feet. So, we got a subsequent letter from McIntyre saying they don't have a problem with it. But nonetheless, it's beyond what was permitted, so I felt before I released the surety, I put it to you once again and you give me the okay.
The reclamation's been done.
The reclamation's done, everything else is fine. I got the ASBILT, that's the only deviation.
Is ASBILT showing that they went in?
Yes.
Okay.
As long as it's transparent.
I mean...
McIntyre doesn't have a problem, so...
We'll have to make a motion to...
McIntyre doesn't have a problem.
All right, let's make a motion to release the bond for four thirty-six Northeast Main Street for Pine, Sand and Stone. And should we reference?
No.
Okay.
Okay, motion made by Mike Z., seconded by Ken. All those in favor?
Aye.
Bond abstain, motion carries.
Okay, thank you.
We vouchers to sign or what?
Sign voucher. Have we signed all the covenants? We signed the, we signed one covenant, you made a copy, right?
We did.
Trying to sign that one.
This one then?
No. I have a copy of the signed one, so we're good.
You don't need that one.
No, that can go back in there.
All right.
What about seven? Did we sign a voucher tonight?
No, the vouchers are ready, we're gonna sign those next.
Anything else, Bill?
Yeah, the only thing, I added Lakeside Residential to the future agenda items. I did touch base with CMRPC. They are, I have two things actually. You know, so I wanted direction from the board. They are moving forward with having us on the DLTA District Local Technical Assistance Grant Application to cover this fifteen thousand dollars associated with this project. We're still moving forward with that and I will update the board likely next month. I'm hoping I could have a little more, more of a timeline because, you know, if we're looking at May, we gotta get this done by mid-March. So, you know, that's pretty aggressive.
Yeah, that's pretty impressive, yeah.
So, the other thing with regard to CMRPC, I did have Maria distribute a copy of those zoning maps. So, I'm not sure if anybody has feedback. I need, I really need to give, give them some direction because, I mean, we're spanning multiple fiscal years for this, for usage of these hours and they're being overly generous, frankly. So, we need to kinda wrap it up.
Okay. So, if you have any ideas, look it over, if you have any ideas, order them to Bill. You wanna put it on the agenda for next meeting?
Okay.
Yeah, could we?
Yep.
And have, have the maps?
Yeah. Yeah, I emailed them out. I'm happy to, it's difficult to print them because they're not color and then it becomes difficult to read.
What if we had like this tool?
They'd be really small because the only color printer we have is an eight and a half by eleven.
What about if you had it on a computer where you can touchscreen and make certain areas bigger?
Well, yeah, we have that.
We'll put on that.
If you have a copy of that...
Well, that's what I emailed.
Yeah, that's what he emailed.
We could look at it here together, too.
No, no. I'll take a copy of the, the one you have, got a staple, staples and have one hold up.
Print it? Would you like me to have Maria do that?
I'll say spend a couple bucks.
Or I'll talk to one of the local engineers and say, "Hey, print this out large-scale for me."
Yeah, bring it here.
There you go.
If you could.
I'll see what I can do.
Appreciate it. Now, we're there, but you can see it, you know?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
And we can put notes on it if something isn't...
Size of the wall. Walk our way through.
We're not that blind yet.
And that's it.
Just those two for now?
Yep.
Let's see, how's...
That's it?
How's that one going?
I'm gonna sign these vouchers before we, before we leave.
I can bring it up.
One on the future agenda, you and I were discussing about private ways and stuff that...
Yes. You want me to talk about that?
The town should not be liable for taking care of these and plowing them and stuff, but it seems to be a communication...
Well, here's the issue, okay? As you know, residential compounds, like we just signed...
Right, we're not responsible for that.
Hold on, hold on.
I know, go ahead.
Isabella Drive is another private way. We have a number of recent drive subdivisions that don't meet full construction standards for a conventional subdivision, okay? Generally, when we grant excessive waivers, we ask that they make it a private way with a homeowners association that's responsible for the maintenance and upkeep of the way. Okay?
That I understand.
Everybody up with me?
Yeah.
Okay. At a recent town meeting, as a result of a number of complaints on other private ways like Perry Street Extension and...
Lotter Road, Parker Road.
Parker Road's another one. The one over there by the, going up Northwest Main Street on the left, Ridge Trail.
Ridge Trail.
Okay. So, there's a number of these that, you know, the people genuinely, if, these are ancient private ways and, you know, the town... These people have been out there for years and, you know, so it's a different category. So, we have, we have a new general bylaw that just was passed at a recent town meeting as a result of some of these ancient private ways.
I knew this would come back to kick us in the butt.
Okay. And that general bylaw says the town will maintain private ways.
Prior to what?
Doesn't say prior to what?
That's the problem.
Okay, it says will maintain prior to... Town.
Didn't come through here.
No, it didn't, it's a general bylaw. Okay? Nonetheless, nonetheless, the issue becomes, now we're getting people on these more recent private ways that do in fact have homeowners association, like Isabella Drive, you might remember.
Now, what happens?
Okay. So, now they're saying that the town's responsible for maintaining these private ways?
Yep.
Okay. In spite of the fact we granted significant waivers to the construction standards?
Correct.
Okay?
And then return...
Okay, so, I raised this question with Ernie and I'm not looking to get a resolution tonight, but it's something we seriously need to think about and take a direction on. But we can't be waiving these things significantly or having construction of gravel residential compound roads that we're gonna be responsible for maintaining.
But I thought you said residential compound.
And I totally, I mean...
That's a private way, no different than as well.
And I'm sad to say, I mean, this is where unfortunately, and I know it can happen, but there's no communication. Why isn't, whoever's making up this, these rules and laws, why aren't they talking to us, the planning board, who's setting up all these roads and developments? And they just go ahead on their own and do stuff without even talking to us?
Yeah, that they want, we want them to take care of it, right?
And the thing is, is if that's the case, then why are we here? Close this up and let them run it all?
Well, you have to make a decision as to whether or not we're gonna allow private ways.
Well, that's all that.
So, you have two solutions, the way I see it, okay? Solution number one is the general bylaw gets modified and clarified. And option number two is you're not granting waivers for construction standards.
There's no waivers granted.
It's either A or B. It can't be granting waivers and then we're responsible for maintaining.
It should be prior to a certain year or two.
Right, that's how you can modify the by...
Modify the bylaw.
Prior to nineteen fifty.
Well, the thing is this...
So, think about it. I'm not looking for an answer.
Not tonight.
It's late.
But I think we all agree.
That's something else we have to put on the agenda and discuss.
Good way to end the night with people meddling in things that shouldn't be meddling.
In the meantime, the powers that be should let them know that.
Yeah.
Don't be going, telling...
There's a reason that there's boards. You know, if they don't wanna have boards, then just let everybody know, you know?
All right, next item on the agenda is adjournment.
We're all in favor of that.
Meeting minutes or skip it?
So moved.
And you don't have any meeting minutes, do we?
Yeah, we do.
Oh, man, it's ten, twenty, three.
Oh, no.
All right, just take two minutes.
Already made it. Motion's been made and seconded.
This'll take two seconds, let's just do it.
Let them do his minutes.
Retract.
Go ahead, sorry.
October twenty-third. I don't know if you guys have this, why do I have it? Anyway...
Cause you're the master.
Because you got...
We trashed through completely.
You're the linguist.
It's in here somewhere.
All right. Seven oh six PM. Page one. One, two, three, four... Five lines down. Sentence begins with properties. Everybody there?
Yeah.
Go to a comma, there's a clause there, will not being used. It should be B, I guess, will not be used. But it's B. In the document, it's B E I N G. Change to B, okay? Secondly... I may be missing something, but... Anybody listening?
Yeah, we are.
Yeah, oh, yeah.
Discussion, item number one. It's about a release of earth removal bond.
Don't do it.
They reference Earth Removal one eight zero six one nine and then seconds, few later, it's one oh, one eight oh six one oh.
Yeah, hold on. So, uh...
Is that a typo or does there two different?
The two ER numbers. I think there was two of them, wasn't it? They're different.
What is it, typo?
Well, that, then up there's...
It might be it's a typo, these should be the same unless we really talked about two here.
No.
You talked about two, releasing two?
If it was two, it was not, yeah, I think she's confusing. Yeah, I think last meeting, we had two, but one was Pine Bedoian and the other one was Pine Bosma.
What's one number?
Yeah, yeah.
Any idea which is which, Sharon?
If, my gut's telling me the lower date, the lower number is Bosma.
Eighteen six one nine, one of them?
We should have it tonight on the agenda, yeah. That's right. So, Pine Bedoian is six one nine, Mary. And then Pine Bosma is six one zero.
Is that right then?
Mary's got it.
She'll hear, she's listening. She's the eye in the sky. The ear in the sky. All right, any other comments?